Are not just nurses. We have specialty training to care for specific patient populations and life and death and birth situations for a reason. These reasons are clearly outlined and guarded by an extremely important lifesaving law, Title 22. And long before any of these sudden and unsafe directives were suddenly announced, my, my unit RNs, fellow RNs across the health department, clinics and hospital, brought up concerns about chronic short staffing, a lack of attention to getting travelers to support us before surges hit, and about canceling elective surgeries and properly identifying, training and working with all the nurses to make sure we were prepared, but we knew would likely be a very deadly winter surge. Our NICU nurses in particular carefully laid out our valid fears of COVID cross contamination if we were forced to float into COVID positive patient units outside of our specialty area, and then return to our own units in emergency. Decisions like these could expose our tiny, vulnerable and very sick newborns to deadly COVID. This is absolutely unacceptable to our NICU RNs. The nurses from NICU, mother infant and labor and delivery are all ready and willing to help our colleagues and support them when we are able, but suddenly implementing an unsafe floating practice without properly identifying the nurses best trained to do so, providing proper orientation, training, education is a recipe for disaster. We are always on alert and ready to run to our patients in need. We run into emergencies, not away from them, and that includes protecting and advocating for our patients pandemic or not. We cannot safely advocate for and protect our precious newborns if our voices are ignored and silenced. Our babies do not have the voices to speak for themselves. This is why we have come before you guys today. While nurses are cautiously hopeful after delivering a petition to our CNO yesterday, Nancy Busher, and a memo following, followed with promises of changes, we know we cannot count on hopes or promises anymore. So I stand with my RN colleagues today and asking you guys to direct upper management to sign an agreement with our nurses that ensures the protections we need to care for our patients. Thank you.
Well, well timed. Thank you so much for your comment, Jamie. Well, just to reiterate, this is the East Garrison Community Services District opportunity for public comment. There will be another opportunity for public comment specific to the Board of Supervisors. So for anyone who wants to wait for that opportunity, you're welcome to speak now, but the, the, to speak to the official Board of Supervisors, that would be in a moment. So moving on, well, it looks like we still have a hand raised from Karen. If we could unmute Karen and allow three minutes for public comment.
I would prefer to speak at the end of the meeting, and this is regarding a separate subject to the Garrison project.
Okay, thank you, Karen. We'll have public comment for the Board of Supervisors will be just in a moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have another? Oh, and I do have another hand raised from Jennifer John-Pierre. Jennifer, did you want to speak now or during the Board of Supervisors' public comment? We may need to unmute Jennifer.
Oh, hi. Hi Supervisor Askew. I would like to speak to the board. At what moment would that be happening?
It'll be on our next item. So hang tight and we'll make sure we call your name.
Okay, I'll just keep my hand raised so I can stay in order of...
Thank you.
Okay, okay, that's perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So the only item on today's East Garrison Community Services District is a consent calendar item to receive a report on the meeting schedule selection by the East Garrison Community District Services Advisory Committee for the 2021 calendar year. Is there any public comment on, or do the supervisors have any comment on this item? Seeing no hands raised, I will move on to any public comment on the East Garrison Community Services calendar for 2021. Seeing no hands raised, I might be happy to entertain a motion.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
I believe I heard a motion from Supervisor Adams with a second from Supervisor Aleho. Could we get a roll call, please?
Director Aleho?
Aye.
I did.
Aye. Aleho, aye.
Director Phillips?
Aye.
Director Lopez?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Aye.
And Director Chair Askew.
Aye. We have a unanimous approval and we'll move on to adjournment of the Board of Directors of the East Garrison Community Services District. We will reconvene the 1:30 session of the Monterey County Board of Directors, or Board of Supervisors, and could we get a roll call?
Let the record reflect, all supervisors are present with Supervisor Lopez, Phillips, Aleho and Adams appearing via video conference, and Chair Supervisor Askew appearing in person.
And do we have any additions or corrections from County Council?
Yes, thank you Chair. Board, I would ask that you add two urgency items, two items of potential initiation of litigation to the end of the Board of Supervisors of the county meeting today pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2, specifically two matters of potential initiation of litigation under Government Code Section 54956.9. These matters and the need for the closed session came to our attention after the posting of the regular agenda last week. So we will need a vote on that, and it will take a four-fifths vote to add these items to the agenda. Thank you.
Excellent. So we just need to entertain a motion from the board for this? Yep. I'd like to entertain a motion from the board.
Second.
Wonderful. So I have a motion from Supervisor Lopez, a second from Supervisor Phillips to add this closed session item to the end of the board meeting today. And if we get a roll call.
Supervisor Aleho?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Askew.
Aye. All right, moving right along to our consent calendar. This is items number 24 through, oh, I'm sorry, do we have any additions or corrections by the clerk?
There are no additions and corrections. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Moving right on to our consent calendar, we have items number 24 through 36 on our consent calendar. Are there any supervisors who wish to pull an item from today's consent calendar?
I have a question for item 26.
Item 26? Any other items? I had some questions for item number 29. So let's go ahead and pull 26. Supervisor Adams?
Thank you very much, Chair Askew. The question that I wanted to ask, this is regarding an MOU with, from the Department of Social Services to the Housing Authority of Monterey County to serve meals to eligible seniors effective January 21 to June 26. And I'm just wondering if it's normal procedures to have a five-year term for this kind of a program? So it's item 26.
Laura Medina, are you available to respond to this? I see you on the Zoom.
Yes. So this is our usual term supervisor, so there's nothing that is unusual about this particular agreement.
Okay, great. So is there any concern over the changes that are taking place within the world these days that we would be able to have a really adequate performance by a contractor for five years?
Yeah, no, no, not, not this point, not for the senior meals program. No, we're very competent in the delivery of service.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to hear. I appreciate that. And then though I did not want to pull it or have any comment on it, I did on item 33, I simply want to say that I'm very supportive of spending cannabis dollars on the CCA program for cannabis data collection. So thank you very much Supervisor. Chair. That's it for me.
Great, wonderful. Thank you Supervisor Adams. Before I move on with my questions on item number 29, were there any members of the public who wanted to pull an item from today's agenda for question or comment? I see one hand raised. Scott? Okay, that's gone. Okay. But I do know that Mike Weaver had asked about a consent item. I believe he has an extension number 659. If we could unmute Mr. Weaver for...
Oh, it's okay. Yeah.
Hello?
You're on, Mike. What, what item did you, would you like to pull?
Yes, item number 34, please. This is the Laguna Seca issue.
Okay, wonderful. Would you like to ask your question or comment now?
I would. Thank you, Chair Supervisor Askew. I have the three questions and then two requests on this. The first question is, I don't know how the board can justify spending this much money for workers when the board's Laguna Seca management team largely alienated SCRAMP longtime volunteers. The SCRAMP volunteers worked there since the beginning of Laguna Seca for free. There's now, you're being asked to approve over a million dollars to hire workers. Some of those SCRAMP workers might like to come back. Question two is, how can the Board of Supervisors, Laguna Seca management team continue to allow multi-day, many events at Laguna Seca during the COVID pandemic? People are arriving from Los Angeles, San Diego, all of Southern California, in addition to people from the Greater San Francisco Bay Area, and even people from out of state for multi-day events, usually on weekends, sometimes Friday, Saturday, Sunday, that are categorized by your management team as track rentals. This board and its health department are requiring other private businesses in Monterey County to shut down because of the pandemic, and the residents of Monterey County have been and continue to be locked down with shelter in place orders. And yet, people and their friends are arriving from Southern California in the Greater Bay Area and are having to stay somewhere in Monterey County and eat locally and are mixing with local people. Question three is, how is this expenditure of over a million dollars to hire workers for Laguna Seca track rental not considered growth inducing? The number of events at Laguna Seca during the pandemic has increased tremendously. I am requesting CEQA environmental review as to the growth inducing aspects of this $1,275,000 expenditure and the uses at Laguna Seca currently. Finally, my recommendation for the board is to continue this item and schedule it for a full public hearing. I'm sure more people knew about it, possibly previous SCRAMP volunteers, they'd like to chime in. Thank you, and that's all I have to say.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Weaver. Do we have someone from staff able to respond briefly to this comment?
I don't know if Levon Chen is on the...
Chair, I can, I can comment on the, the contract workers. The contract workers have absolutely nothing to do with what the former volunteers used to do. These are specialized workers who, who work the turns and perform other specialized services out there. So these, the, these workers did not in any way replace any of the volunteers or the employees of SCRAMP out there. These are, these are necessary specialized services to run the daily track rentals and the other events out there. With respect to the, the, the actual daily track rentals, I, I don't know that, I don't know that activity has necessarily increased there. Daily track rentals has been a long, has long been a staple of Laguna Seca activity. With respect to the travel, I don't know that Laguna Seca management would know where people are coming from, or if, if in fact they are staying. But the daily track rentals were long considered a recreational activity that would be allowed out at Laguna Seca. So that's what I know. And if the board wants to continue it, to get some more information, it would be at their discretion.
Madam Chair?
Thank you for that. And I'm not sure who we have speaking, but I do have another hand raised by Joe Cubage. If you have an item you'd like to pull from today's consent item, if we could unmute Mr. Joe so that he may speak and pull an item.
Madam Chair, this is John Norigi with Laguna Seca.
Okay, could you hold on just a moment, Joe, while we let Joe Cubage speak?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. All right. Joe, you have, if you have an item you'd like to pull from the consent agenda, if you could let us know what that is now?
Yeah, everybody, I'm not having to talk to mine. I'm here every third bird. I'd like to follow up Mr. Sammerin's comments.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that so we can hear it more clearly?
I'd like to follow up on Mr. Sammerin's comments, item 34, six way.
I'm sorry, I'm not able to hear.
Okay. I've got to close my, thank you.
Okay, maybe try emailing the clerk of the board. It's COB@CO.Monterey.ca.us, and we can have your comment distributed to all the Board of Supervisors offices. Once again, that email address is COB@CO.Monterey.ca.us. And I believe we had a comment from Mr. Norigi. If we could unmute Mr. Norigi so that he may speak.
Yes, Madam Chair. First of all, congratulations on your election. I'd like to respond, if I could, to Mr. Weaver's three points regarding Laguna Seca. First and foremost, the item on the consent agenda of 34, that is not an expense to the county. Those expenses are reimbursed by the track renter. It's strictly how the format of the accounting takes, takes place with certified. Volunteers, as Mr. Gerard stated, never perform the duty. These are the corner workers, the gate people, and also the ones that monitor the sound for everyday track rentals. Our actual track rental business is actually down substantially from previous years, obviously due to COVID and the pandemic. We have been following very strict protocols that were approved by the Health Director. Back on June 1st, we opened, and I'm proud to say that we have had no scares and no incidents, and we run extremely strict protocols in our paddock area, which is the closed paddock area. This really doesn't have any bearing on the races, per se, the events. Obviously, I think you're all aware, the ones that were canceled this year, and also the ones we did hold were without spectators. But as the operator of Laguna Seca, I'm extremely proud at the way we have managed this, the protocols. And as Mr. Gerard stated, we do not know where people are coming from, but I can say that we have the health of our residents and our community and our staff here held at the highest regard during this timeframe, and we are thankful, as is the case with all the golf courses in town, that we have been allowed to remain open and operating and supporting the county with some, some revenue and as an economic engine, while other places are sadly closed down. So that's really the situation as it relates to item number 34. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that comment, Mr. Norigi. Seeing no additional public comment, I did have my question regarding item number 29, which is a sheriff's office contract for a VeroVision mail screener. And I'm not sure if we have the sheriff available to answer a few questions. Oh, we do. We have a whole team. Wonderful, thank you. So the couple of questions that I have on this item are, well, what will happen? It appears to be a two-year contract, so I was just curious, what happens in two years after the contract ends? Will we still have access to the equipment?
Thank, thank you Supervisor. Chair, Askew, yes. So it's, it's a purchase, and so it's the, the two-year part of the agreement is just for the ongoing service, but it will be our equipment once we, once we sign the agreement.
Okay, thank you. And then my second follow-up to that question was, if you could just explain the thinking behind the sole source justification, what other options there were for similar technology?
Well, there's, obviously, this is pretty specialized equipment, and so we did go through and, and look at, look at various other vendors. Bottom line, we were looking for, for a way to maximize the, the detection side of this. And this is, this is equipment that we've, a vendor that we've seen that we've demoed, we've talked to other counties that are running it. And really, the short answer is this, you know, this equipment, especially when you're talking about illicit drugs like heroin and/or fentanyl, and of course, you know, fentanyl can be lethal with a dose as small as a pinhead. And the advantage to this particular, the way this, this vendor or this, this equipment works, even the smallest of contraband that's, say, secreted in the folds of an envelope, it, it can be detected by this equipment. So it's fantastic technology, really, it'll augment. We already have a human that helps scan and screen all incoming mail to, to look for contraband. We have a canine assigned to the jail that does the same thing. This will just really enhance our, our detection abilities and is, especially with something like fentanyl, which is a synthetic opioid, it has no odor and it cannot be detected by a canine. So that's the advantage to this particular technology.
Great, thank you for that. I just, you know, when we see sole source justifications come up, we always want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence to ensure that we're, we're making the best, best use of taxpayer dollars. So thank you for that. I do see, nope, I don't see any more hands up from the public, so with...
And, Madam Chair?
Yes, I hear Supervisor Aleho.
I just wanted to add, I mean, we asked the same questions on this item when it went to Budget Committee, and this money does come, I think, from the Board of Community Corrections, so it's, it's specially designated money for these kind of purposes, it's not coming from another portion of our county budget. So, so that made us feel better about this. They postponed it for a year because of certain particular reasons, but now they moved forward with it this coming year.
Wonderful. Thank, thank you Supervisor Aleho. So seeing no further comments or questions on any of our consent agenda items, I will entertain a motion from the board.
I'll make that motion. Madam Chair, approve consent calendar?
Second.
Wonderful. So I believe I have a motion to approve items number 24 through 36 from Supervisor Aleho, with a second from Supervisor Adams, and if we could get a roll call vote.
Supervisor Aleho?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Askew.
Aye. With that, the motion carries, and we'll move right along to appointments. We have items number three through 17, no, those numbers do not add up. Three through 17 for appointments. Are there any supervisors? Who wish to pull any of today's appointment items? Any members of the public who would like to pull an item from today's appointments list? All right, seeing no questions or comments on the appointments, I'll bring this back to the board for action.
I'll make a motion. Yes, you do. I'll make a motion to approve the list of appointments with the acknowledgement that there is a duplication with Fred Brown. Items number five and 17 are duplicate.
Fabulous. And a second?
Second, Aleho.
All right, thank you. So we have, with that, a motion from Supervisor Mary Adams acknowledging that item number 17 is a duplicate, a second from Supervisor Aleho. Could we get a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Aleho? Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
Going back to Supervisor Aleho?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Askew.
Aye. All right, the motion carries, so we will move along to other board matters. Let's see here, we have board comments. We'll go by district, and I'll start with Supervisor Aleho for any board comments today.
No comments today, Madam Chair. I mean, my comments.
Wonderful, thank you. Supervisor Phillips?
No, I'll pass, thank you.
All right, making this easy. Supervisor Lopez?
I'll step in here just to share with the community that we do have a community meeting this evening based on the needs that the community may want to see met at San Antonio Lake. That meeting will be on Zoom. The details are available on the County's Parks Facebook page. I welcome the public's input, and I'll be joining in on that meeting. Many thanks to Nate Merkel from the county team who's taking lead on that, and I look forward to seeing several folks on that tonight to share their ideas. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you Supervisor Lopez. Supervisor Adams, any board comments today?
Happy New Year to everyone. 2020, 2021 is going to be a much better year. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have no board comments today. Next up, we've got item number, I believe it's item number 19 for our county administrative officer comments and referrals.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are no, no referrals, and I have no comments this week.
All right. So now onto the fun stuff. We have, I remember receiving a consolidated list of responses from each board member, including our preferred board preferences for committee assignments, commission assignments for the calendar year 2021. And it looks like we have a 10-minute presentation from Annette DiAdamo. So we will unmute you, Annette, and here you are.
Thank you. I don't think this is a 10-minute presentation, but I'll make it as quick as I can. So at the beginning of each calendar year, the chair proposes appointment of board members to serve on various board standing and ad hoc committees, and a number of external boards, committees, commissions and other governmental entities, which require representation by the county, and these appointments are valid for the calendar year unless they are modified by subsequent action by the board supervisors. This year, the incoming chair requested that each board member submit their preferred assignments to these committees to the county administrator, and a consolidated list of the board members' preferred assignments is included as Exhibit A in your report. The chair will take these preferences into consideration and propose assignments for calendar year 2021 at the next Board of Supervisors meeting. Also included in this report for your information is a current list of board standing committees and a current list of board ad hoc committees. Those are Exhibits B and Exhibit C. This report also requests or recommends that the board dissolve the Fort Ord Committee and the Ad Hoc 2020 Census Steering Committee as both of those committees have completed their work. The report also contains a list of recommendations by various members of the Board of Supervisors to disband committees, create new committees, and a proposal related to the assignment of board members to serve on WAFCO. So to summarize, today, you, we are asking that you receive the list of board members' preferences for 2021 committee assignments, dissolve the Fort Ord Committee and the Ad Hoc 2020 Census Steering Committee, receive the recommendations from the board members regarding adding, dissolving or changing committees in the appointment process, and then to direct the CAO to work with the chair on the proposed 2021 assignments and bring that back to the board for approval next week. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Annette. I just, we'll just briefly begin, since I asked for the, the new process here, to offer appreciation to our CEO and our legislative team for facilitating the process, and to thank my colleagues for taking the time to share in a more open and transparent process for considering a conversation about our board assignments. I'd love to see us engage in a conversation today that allows us to reach some consensus before we bring back, before I bring back recommendations next week, but at the very least, being able to hear the different perspectives in a, in a public manner like today, I believe will be insightful and helpful as we all consider our priorities for this year. So I will pass it around. Maybe we should go in supervisor order, and if you would like to share your thoughts or comments, maybe prioritizing what some of the requests that you have are for committee assignments for the coming year, we can, we can have a little conversation. So I will open it up to Supervisor Aleho.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the process. I think a lot of us expressed interest in, in keeping the committees we have. I think there's only a few committees where there might be perhaps change, but there, there are a handful, and I think there's dozens of committees. When you look at the ad hocs and all the standing committees, there's dozens that we get appointed to, and in the past, this, this process has been a little, I would say, cause of tension, but I think we reached a good medium with the committees that each district has currently, and, and to keep that happy medium, I would advise, advise us all to just stick with all the committees that each district has. And I think, I think we're at a happy place right now with our, our committee assignments, and I hope that we could just move forward this year with what we have, and, and I think that's, that's the way we can just start off the year and stay focused on the work ahead of us, rather than having to dispute all over again regarding a few handful of, of committee assignments. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Phillips, any comments?
Yeah, I, I tend to agree. Uh, I'll go through them a little bit though, uh, but I tend to agree. I, I think we keep, uh, basically the assignments we have. I did point in for the Budget Committee since there was going to be a vacancy on that. Uh, uh, so that's where I put my name in there. With the Capital Improvement Committee, I'd like to obviously stay on that. I think, uh, we've done a pretty good job there and I do have a little construction background. And so I think it helps, uh, what I'm doing there. Um, on the, uh, LAFCO, uh, I know there was some talk about trying to rotate this somehow. And I frankly, I think we have good people on it. I applied to be on LAFCO if one of the other two, the on there, uh, it's always been a north and kind of a south thing since we're the most impacted. But, uh, if Supervisor Ale wants to stay on there, uh, I don't obviously have any problem about that. If he wants to step off, I'd be glad to step in, uh, on LAFCO, uh, since it's in, and on M1W. I, I've been working on that for six years and we got a lot of invested in there. And I obviously would like to stay on M1W. So outside of that, uh, I can answer any questions that you want. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you. Um, Supervisor Lopez.
Sure. Yeah, I know when the request came across my desk, I also asked for status quo. I'm happy with the Committees and Commissions that I have. Um, you know, I know that, that question of LAFCO comes up as well. I like the team we have there. And obviously we're in some leadership positions moving into next year. And so I, I really want to see that stay the way it is. Uh, and yeah, I think overall I, I'm happy with where we are and look forward to the conversation.
Right. Supervisor Adams.
Thank you very much, uh, Chair Askew. And I'm very thankful that you have this opportunity, that you have brought forward this opportunity for us to have an open discussion with the Committee Assignments. I can remember my first year when I was Chair, the Board had changed dramatically. And I spent a long, long time looking at the balance to ensure that the people were matched together well and that each of the, the Supervisors had similar, um, uh, numbers of Committees and that it was split in a fair and, and even way. Um, there are a couple of things I feel strongly about. Um, one, I feel on the, uh, the, uh, the Capital Improvement Committee Supervisor Phillips and I have a joint referral in on infrastructure and he and I have been able to work well together on that Committee. So my hope is that I would be able to continue on that, uh, on that Committee. And I guess I should preface this by saying, you know, whatever you want me to do, I'm happy to do. You're the Chair and I will follow your lead. Um, the, uh, on the Parks Commission, again, I'm happy to, to serve on that. But I must say that so much of the, uh, of the work from the Parks Commission deals with the lakes. And I'm not, I'm fine doing this, but I just feel that it might be better served by someone who had more, um, sort of vested in local interest in the, in the lakes area. Um, uh, again, yes, I'm the person that wanted to have, uh, la, looking about LAFCO. I just feel that it has, it is a politicized position. I feel that it would demystify it and make it more fair for everyone to have an opportunity to serve on it if we started a rotation, not unlike having the Chair of the Board be a rotating position. And I, my suggestion had been that it would, um, I think, serve us well if we made the determination that the Chair of the Board, the Incoming Chair, and then the outgoing Chair would all be, uh, each person would have the opportunity to serve on LAFCO. That would allow every person to have an opportunity to serve on this very important Committee. And, um, even though people feel that, oh, well, my District has more interest in LAFCO or, or, um, whatever, and I appreciate that, but I feel that we're elected by our District, but we need to be knowledgeable and able to serve the entire community. And then finally, the Committee that I really want to be returned to is the Cannabis Committee. Um, I have a tremendous, um, my District has a tremendous history with cannabis, going back to the time of Big Sur when it was illegal and, uh, a very, um, uh, black market profitable business. Um, but more importantly, when cannabis, uh, for medical, uh, research was allowed, my District was key in, in, uh, in working in that, no, year. And I feel that, um, for the benefit of, of my District, that it would be important to have someone who represents many of the, um, who represents the area where cannabis is such an important, uh, crop would be important. And I could see where Supervisor, um, Lopez would feel the same way. So, um, that would be my, my suggestion. And as I said, I'm happy to serve where you want me to serve and, um, I am always open to, uh, talking about this. So thank you.
Great. Thank you Supervisor, um, Adams. And, uh, so some of the things that I've looked at when I'm, uh, when I, when I've been looking at the Committee Assignments, um, as I do think it's important that we have, uh, shared responsibility in terms of the opportunity to work on, uh, policy, um, at the more granular level uh, that occurs, uh, in the Board Standing and Ad hoc Committees as well as many of the, um, regional bodies. And, um, looking at the way that the assignments are made now, um, the, there are some Districts who have significantly more opportunity to engage than other Districts. And I would love to be able to see a process by which we are able to share some of that responsibility a little more equitably, um, and opportunity a little more equitably. Um, in addition to what, uh, what we have, uh, talked about so far, I did recommend as part of, um, the process, uh, adding three new Committees, um, uh, which I would love to hear some feedback on or any, um, reasons not to proceed with this. Um, specifically a Committee, uh, Board Standing Committee focused on homelessness and a Board Standing Committee focused on housing policy. Um, I believe that these are two issues that I've really been proud to see our County respond to um, in terms of the growing crisis that we're experiencing, um, with our unhoused neighbors and the need for additional affordable housing. And I do believe that having some distinct strategies and focused approach would be beneficial, especially considering the fact that there could be additional funding from state and federal sources coming down the pipe for both of those, uh, areas. Um, and then the additional, uh, Committee would be an Ad hoc Committee for COVID Communications. I think that, uh, Chair Lopez did a phenomenal job of keeping everyone organized and focused, uh, last year. And I would love to be able to, um, utilize and call on his, uh, expertise and experience, um, moving forward. So I would propose that the, uh, a COVID Ad hoc Committee, uh, for Communications, um, consists of both our former Chair and our current Chair, um, moving forward for 2021. Any other comments?
I did realize.
Yep. Supervisor Adams.
Thank you. I neglected to add this. Um, I think that both Supervisor, Chair Askew and I recommended the dissolution of the COVID-19 Personal Services Ad hoc Committee, given that the State has authority over the sector based on the tiered structure, um, to what's being allowed to operate. So I think that this Ad hoc Committee is not really necessary and we might want to consider, um, pulling that one, um, to disbanding that one. And then, um, I very much support your recommendation for, um, the Committee on both Housing and on, um, Affordable Housing and on, on homelessness. And should you be, uh, inclined, I would be interested in helping on the Affordable Housing, um, arena.
I'm sure I have my hand raised.
Yep. And I, oh, thank you. Supervisor Alejo, thank you.
Madam Chair, I think the action, uh, recommended has already been addressed. Um, about two years ago, um, I had done a referral to, uh, place the policy issue of housing into our Health, formerly Health and Human Services Committee. The Board of Supervisors by unanimous vote voted to add in the referral, even included homelessness. Because at that time, like, was my concern, uh, we didn't have a policy placed to address homelessness issues in housing. And it, it was appropriate, uh, to place that along with, um, the, the, along with health issues and human services issues. And so, um, we've been serving on that Committee. I think Supervisor Lopez and I serve on that Committee that already has policy jurisdiction over those two issues. Um, the only thing, other thing I would comment on, because, um, um, there are Committees that I serve on, and I want to just be clear, I, um, I, on, on LAFCO, um, any important, um, or coveted Committee, we can make the same, um, argument. We should rotate it, um, among all the Supervisors. It's different when it's a Chair for one year. It's other issues when you're gaining expertise, having institutional memory on particular policy issues. And so, so I just wanted to express, you know, I want to remain on LAFCO and, uh, as well on the Cannabis Committee. I, I, I've been a leader on that when it came to the, the taxation issues. I did the referral for the Outdoor Pilot Project Grows. I mean, there's a lot of issues that I've actually led on and we're following through on because sometimes we have policy proposals that start, but in County Government, things move sometimes slower than we would like to. And we're, and we're still carrying out those, um, um, proposals and trying to refine, uh, um, the, some of these pilot projects that are still very early in their infancy, um, in terms of the rollout of that particular program. So I just wanted to comment on those as my colleagues, I comment on Committees that I currently serve on. Uh, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Alejo. And I believe Supervisor Lopez also has his, uh, hand raised.
Thank you, Chair. I just, uh, you know, wanted to comment on that question about the location of the housing policy. I know that it's been with health, housing, uh, health and housing and human services. And when I look at that, I think it's appropriate when we look at COVID-19 and look at what the driving factor is for that in our community. Those issues are so intricately woven together. Uh, and I know that that's a Committee that's already formed. And I think it's a question of an assignment rather than creating two additional Committees might be more effective in terms of, you know, the use of staff time to address those issues, just considering the fact that the interplay between them would have to be a discussion that happens inevitably. And that's a great place for them to happen. Uh, so I just wanted to throw that opinion out there. Um, and obviously cannabis has been brought up. And with the vast majority of that being in my District, I too desire to remain on cannabis and continue to do the work we've done there, uh, as we have accomplished quite a bit in the last couple of years with the Committee Structure we have currently.
Madam Chair, one thing I've got to add on, just on the housing issue, that, that we did go through significant changes in our County regarding housing. Uh, when I first became a Supervisor, uh, we, um, we made, we ended, I did a re, like, referral and even through the Budget, we made some reorganization of our housing staff. And, and we, then we recruited, um, some positions were eliminated, the office was restructured, and there was a referral on this. Uh, we hired Anastasia Wyatt from the City Salinas. We've hired additional staff, gave some additional support just in our, in our last Budget, uh, in June. Um, and that's why I think we, we had to revamp. Um, and we did it at the perfect time, right when I, uh, significant state money was coming in for homelessness and housing, including Prop One and Prop Two, the Affordable Housing Bond and then the Homelessness, um, Mental Health, uh, Bond. Uh, those are all monies that are now coming out. And with the new staff and the new housing, I think we're going to see more action in this area. But it, it took some time to restructure our own internal housing staff, but also, um, um, draw down the dollars that are needed. And, and so far the money we've got, we've been able to put them, uh, through significant work, including our Navigation Center in Seaside and in Salinas and the most recent one in Chinatown. We, we are doing some significant things. Um, and that's why we, we like those, um, that, that, that synergy that housing and homelessness has with Health and Human Services.
Supervisor Adams.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I understand where people are coming from. And of course, I can go either way on this. But it seemed to me, when you had brought it forward, when Supervisor Askew, I just, I thought that homelessness would ne, appropriately be nestled under, um, Department of Social Services. That's where that should be. To me, it seems that affordable housing should be more appropriately nestled over on the, uh, more like a land use sort of thing. Because the issues that come forward are not necessarily the same kind of human ser, uh, uh, social service issues. It's a different approach. So that's, that's where I was coming from when you had brought this forward. It sounded like it makes sense to me not to have affordable housing with social services, but that should be over in the, um, with Anastasia in the, uh, the, the Department where she, where she functions best. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Great. And I'll just make a few more comments. Um, you know, in terms of the housing, um, and homelessness issues, um, I, 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 I do think it's, uh, great that we did add them to the hu, uh, Human Services Committee, um, Health and Human Services Committee. Um, however, I think my concern is that that Committee only meets, um, irregularly, quarterly. And that really to have the kind of focus that we need moving forward, um, and, uh, what I'm hearing is that our, um, County Staff are looking for a clear direction, um, and access to Board Members on issues of homelessness specifically. Um, so that would be, uh, a little more thought there. Um, let's see here. Uh, are there any public comments in regards to Committee Assignments? If you would like to use the Zoom feature to raise your hand or press star nine, star six, star nine, uh, to raise your hand if you're on, um, uh, audio Zoom. Otherwise, we will bring this back. Uh, I did have a couple, uh, a question regarding some of the Ad hoc Committees and how often they meet. Um, and how, um, how long we want to continue to maintain Ad hoc Committees that were formed some time ago. Uh, specifically the Animal Services Ad hoc Committee was formed in 2016 as an Ad hoc Committee. Um, is there a need to continue that particular Ad hoc Committee? And if it's meeting regularly?
Supervisor Phillips has his hand up.
Oh, thank you so much. Okay.
Uh, I, I.
Different pieces around. So we'll go to Supervisor Phillips and then Supervisor Lopez.
You know, I, I, I do think we've made a lot of progress. It took us a lot longer than frankly it should have, but we've been making pretty good progress on it. And I would think we'd want to keep that for another year. But I would think after that, it may be time to dissolve that. And that other thing on which way we go with, uh, a new Committees or, or dovetail this with the other, I'd be interested to see what our CAO, uh, recommendation is, uh, on that. So like, like Mary said, I could go either way. So.
And I'll just jump in and echo Supervisor Phillips's comments in terms of the animal ad hoc. I know that we've, didn't expect it to take this long. I was a staffer when we started those conversations. Uh, and I think we've made some great progress. Uh, specifically, I think we positively impacted a lot of animal lives here in Monterey County. And I think we're getting close to some major breakthroughs as well. And so I'd rather, uh, just say that we need one more year at that. Leave it as an ad hoc and reassess next year. But I do think we're close to being able to wrap that one up.
Thank you. Um, uh, Carl McKee, do you want to respond to, um, Supervisor Phillips's question about your thoughts on addition of, uh, additional Committees?
Uh, thank you. In, in particular, related, related to the homelessness and housing, um, I, I think there are good arguments on, on both sides of, of, of the issue that have been made so far, uh, that I think it's important for staff, uh, to have, uh, some, um, real regular meetings with, with a Committee of the Board to talk about some of the issues, especially around homelessness, um, uh, and especially as we deal with some of the, uh, challenges of homelessness and encampments, encampments during the time of COVID and after. Uh, and while it, it could certainly be part of the health, human ser, housing, human services, I would, I would recommend that we make sure that that, uh, title is, is, of that Committee would be, uh, uh, broadened to, to clearly address homelessness. I know Supervisor Alejo made the point that, that it, it is in there. Um, uh, I'll, and, and maybe there, maybe it needs to meet more, more frequently just so that we can get, uh, some of these items, uh, to the Board or, or maybe staff needs to just know that they can ask that those, uh, that that Committee, uh, meet, um, uh, if there's an urgent need to, to address those issues. Separately, I, you know, I think it's such a big issue, homelessness and housing in this County, um, uh, that, you know, that if there's a separate Committee of the Board that's created just to address that side of it, uh, you know, I think that could work for, uh, showing the importance of, of, um, addressing the needs of our community.
We, um, I, I see that Supervisor, uh, Alejo has his hand raised.
Well, very quickly, I, I just wanted to reiterate, I, I would encourage the Board to relook at that referral. I mean, that was intent back then. And, and like, uh, I mean, some Committees, because of the amount of work, like the Budget, Legislative, uh, they're more regular, um, human resources, um, um, sometimes cannabis, so they, they're not as, meet as frequently. But, um, all our other Committees can always call a special meeting at any time if there is an issue of urgency. The Staff, um, or the CEO, the, the Chair of that Committee could call a special meeting to address any issues at any time. So I don't want to, to make it seem like, like there's an inability with the existing Committees and, and infrastructure when there clearly is. Um, and if, if it's just an issue of expanding the title so that there's like a, a, a pinpoint, um, in the title, so we know that's a policy issue, um, in that Committee. Um, but that was an intent, that was part of the referral. Uh, obviously at that time, uh, there was, uh, significant changes coming at the state level and even at our staff level that prompted that original referral. Thank you.
Wonderful. Um, one other question I had was in regard, regards to the Economic Opportunity Committee. Um, I believe, uh, that Committee hasn't met recently. It is a Standing Board Committee. It is a standing board committee. Is there a need to revive that in some way? Do the folks who currently sit on that have an interest in continuing to do that work? Do we need to make any changes to that? I believe that would be Supervisor Phillips, and Supervisor Phillips.
Yeah. I think we haven't been as vigilant on that committee as we should have been, but it's, we were getting ready to revitalize it when we got hit with the COVID. I think we're, it's even going to be more needed now with trying to rebuild the economy when we get started. So I think it's going to be critical, but I got to say, I don't think we've pushed as hard on that committee as we should have. But I think it's important we keep it now. But I'm open to see what Supervisor Adams thinks.
And Supervisor Adams, any comments on the Economic Opportunity Committee?
Yeah, I tend to agree with Supervisor Phillips. I feel like we could have, you know, done a bit more with it than we have done. I guess the question is, is this, is this the time to reexamine that? And as we look at how we are going to have to sort of rebuild the entire economy of our county in light of COVID, I can see that it would be an appropriate time.
All right. We have already closed public comment on this item, but I do have one hand raised. We'll go ahead and accept, if we could open for Alicia Meters to speak for three minutes on committee assignment, and then we will continue forward.
Supervisor Askew, I just want to say congratulations, and, oh, okay. I just want to say congratulations Supervisor Askew to all the other distinguished board members, to everybody who's on this call. I simply had a question, because the homelessness situation in Monterey County, all over the world, but I can concentrate on Monterey County because that's where I live, and that's where I'm proud to serve. Monterey County as an eligibility worker and social worker now for, I'm in my 24th year, so I'm thankful for that. And to see the situation as it is, I was just wondering, how could someone such as myself volunteer to not be on the committee, but a, and maybe I should know the answer to this already, excuse me if I don't, but I want to know how that, as a person not actually on the committee, can actually volunteer to be on the committee with the homelessness to give a per possible? Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you very much, and thank you for your offer of assistance. I believe we will have someone follow up with you to get you some information about where volunteer opportunities exist. So I don't have any-
Yeah, Madam Chair, just one, two last things I would just like to add in.
Why don't we-
Thank you. On the health, housing, and human services, I've got to get that title right. I'm not sure I have it. One of the challenges that we have is trying to figure out which department of the county should be staffed to that, to that standing committee. So if we keep it as is, we'll have to work with the, kind of the departments that overlap, which is Health Department, Social Services, and now the Housing and Community Development that overlap with the work of that committee, and figure out who would be the staff to that, which department would lead staffing the committee. I think it's important for each standing committee to have some county staff as helping make things happen for the committee. And even if the desire of the board is to separate out and have a separate housing and homeless committee, we would still need to have, figure out staff for the Health and Social Services or Human Services Committee also. We'd still have, we'd still have crossover issues that we'd have to address. And so I would suggest that we will work with that standing committee to say who's going to be the lead. It's a little bit challenging. And then on the economic development, we do have an economic development manager, we're in the process, in the process of bringing that person on, and we would suggest that that committee remain.
Great. Thank you very much. So I really want to say I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate everyone being so transparent and open about your top interests. As I said in the beginning, you know, I think equity and the shared opportunity for engaging in the really critical policy decisions that come out of board committee recommendations is important that we do have shared responsibility among everyone on the board. So I will, I will take all of this great information back. I will do my best to bring forward recommendations that reflect the conversation that we had today and the priorities that were shared. If there are any final comments from the board, I don't see any, oh, nope, sorry, I'm in the wrong spot. So I do see a hand raised from Supervisor Luis Alejo. So any final comments?
It was only response to our CAO McKee's comments in terms of the staffing of the 3-H Committee, Health, Housing, and Human Services. It can become the 4-H Committee. But some of these policy issues, they're not, it's not like other departments where it's cleanly one department and not another. When it comes to housing, when it comes to homelessness, there are often multiple department heads that are involved. In fact, even in our coalition of our continuum of care, our Lead Me Home Leadership Council, which is a separate body that addresses homelessness, we do have the Health Department, we do have Glorietta there, we do have Lori Medina. And so, and so these are the same people who are in the Health, Housing, and Human Services Committee already, because those projects intersect continually with Mid Peninsula Housing Project in Chinatown, with our hotel conversion recently, with, in here in Salinas. All those projects require the collaboration between multiple department heads for those projects to successfully draw down the state money and move forward, not to mention the Navigation Center. So all these are just, it's work that we already know is going to require the cross collaboration of the departments. They're already there in this particular committee. And I just want us to proceed strategically and in a smart way to make sure that we're not making things more difficult, but actually facilitating and making them easier. The only difference is, is that it's only in the last two years that there's more resources available, and we've hired more staff to be able to do even more work in these coming years. Thank you.
All right. Any other final comments from anyone? I don't see any hands raised. Oh, by Supervisor Lopez.
Yeah, I had one more. Just wanted to throw out there an idea, just in terms of the Cannabis Committee. I think something that I've kind of kicked around for a while with folks in industry, and I think it would be nice to maybe shift that and change the name from cannabis to agriculture. I think we have issues that are coming forward in the coming year, like INSV, which is a pest that's severely impacting lettuce. And I know that our Ad Commissioner needs a forum to discuss with supervisors some of the strategies to address that. And when I look at the ability for that committee to also raise issues that could come to the board and be a pathway to bringing some of those issues directly to the board for the Ad Commissioner, just a suggestion, as you consider these committee assignments of perhaps rebranding that to be the Agriculture Committee that also handles cannabis, is cannabis is agriculture, in my opinion. Just wanted to throw that out there, one more curveball for you.
I'll take it all. Thank you very much. Okay, so I don't see any other supervisors with their hands raised. I'll make my final comments and then take one more look. So the, yep, I will, I will take all of this, rewatch this video, bring back some recommendations. Really just want to, again, appreciate everyone's willingness to engage in an open and transparent conversation that the public can hear. You know, the committee assignments that we talk about, both on the board's standing committees, as well as many of the others, including LAFCO and Monterey Water, you know, have direct and significant impact on our constituents. And I do believe it's important that we find ways to ensure that those supervisors whose constituents are impacted have opportunity to be a part, a part and engage in that, those policymaking spaces. So I have a, yeah, I don't believe this is an act, we're getting clarification as to whether or not this is an action item. I believe we were just receiving a consolidated list. Right, so the direction is to, I will work with our county administrative officer to add an action item to the January 12 meeting of the Board of Supervisors, where we will then be taking a vote to make committee appointments. So we don't necessarily need a vote on this. So with that, we will move on to our general public comment for items not on today's agenda. So I do believe there were a few people who wanted to speak earlier. This is now the time for general public comment, which includes comment on issues that are not on today's agenda elsewhere. Public comment is generally limited to no more than three minutes. We do have a timer up on the screen. Our California's open meeting laws require that our bodies conduct our business in open public meetings, and it does limit the discussion that we have to include items that are posted on the agenda. So it, we appreciate you being here to speak, and it does limit our ability to respond to your comments at this meeting. So if you would like to share general public comment for no more than three minutes, please raise your hand on Zoom or press star nine on your phone, and then I will call on you. We will unmute you, and you will have three minutes to speak. So let's start with Jennifer Jean-Pierre, who has been waiting so patiently since our previous item.
Good afternoon to our elected Board of Supervisors and community members. My name is Jennifer Jean-Pierre, and I am a registered nurse in the intensive care unit at Natividad Hospital. I truly wish that nurses were coming before all of you today to say we are able to focus on what we have swore a legal and ethical oath to do: care and advocate for our patients, because Monterey County upper management has listened to our needs at the bedside and we're working to support us in fighting the deadly COVID-19 pandemic. The reality is, however, is completely the opposite. Every single day for the past year or so, the registered nurses of Monterey County and Natividad have walked into literally a battlefield as we report to duty. But our combat zone isn't a war, isn't a war-ravaged country or due to a deadly pandemic, and ongoing patient surge sweeping across the US and California, right here in Monterey County. Our combat zone and our battlefield has literally been the walls of our own hospital. Yet, the battlefield of our professional nurses has been subjected to not our own making, and it's also not due to deadly COVID-19 pandemic. The truth is that battle nurses have been forced to take on solely due to Monterey County upper management and senior administrators' failure to have an emergency preparedness plan, protective personal equipment, PPE, and adequate staffing in place so that our registered nurses could safely care for our patients. And our nurses know all too well that the war the employer is waging not only puts registered nurses in danger, but our patients in our community as well. Let me just share with you a few of the examples of senior administrators' wrong-headed battle against nurses and the safety of our patients. One, refusal to address their inpatient safety concerns what we called assignment despite objection documents submitted by nurses. Two, putting vital charge nurses into bedside care, filling staff, resource nurses for code blues and rapid responses. Three, blatant violations of California nurse-to-patient ratio laws, nurse specialization and floating protections. Four, intentional exploitation of nurses through forced overtime and mandatory extra shifts when we are already working beyond fatigue and safety standards. Five, a hostile work environment that includes punitive attempts to discipline RNs who advocate for our patients and safe nursing practice standards. Nurses at Monterey County never wanted to be forced to fight for PPE. We never wanted to be forced to fight for life-saving nurse-to-patient ratio laws. We never wanted to fight to enforce long-established nurse specialty and floating protections. We never wanted to fight for our own senior administrators for doing our legal and ethical duty to speak against dangerous working conditions and advocate for our patients when they put them on risk. We never wanted to be forced to fight a deadly pandemic to care for our patients and community while simultaneously fighting upper management's failure to prepare, safely staff, and work with the nurses whose patients depend on our dedication, experience, and advocacy. In fact, we hope to work it out. We hope that working with administration month after month to meet, discuss, warn, reason, even place with senior administration, that they would finally listen. We hoped reason and right would prevail. We hoped, we hoped, and we hoped, but walking into a battlefield of chronic and intentional short staffing, violations in life-saving nurse and patient ratios, safe nursing practice standards, RN specialties, and unsafe floating decisions, along with intimidation and retaliation for reporting patient safety concerns, has left nurses no choice. I'm glad to report that following a delegation yesterday with our chief nurse officer-
Jennifer, if you could wrap up.
Okay, I'm there, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've, the timer ran out. Jennifer, if you could submit your comments in writing so that we can see the full comment, that would be fabulous. It's c o b at c o dot monterey dot c a dot u s. And my apologies for the timer cutting us off. Next up, we have three minutes for Janine Chikirier. You may unmute yourself and speak for three minutes.
Good afternoon. First of all, Chair Supervisor, Chair Askew, congratulations, and happy new year to all the supervisors and county staff. Thank you again for all your hard work last year that none of us ever dreamed that we'd be living. I'm Janine Chikirier. I am the new chair of the Monterey County Hospitality Association and represent the number two industry that has been, as we all know, economically devastated last year. We're now projecting a $1.8 billion loss for 2020 for our industry. I also have to say, I'm quite proud that of our industry, we've gone to great lengths to develop and implement enhanced safety protocols. We've always been great about following guidelines, especially when it comes down to the Health Department and our various hotels and restaurants and other hospitality industry-related businesses. So the reason for my public comment today is to bring attention about three different lawsuits that are happening throughout the state of California filed by the California Restaurant Association. They're in LA County, San Diego County, and Sacramento County. All three lawsuits are based on, there's no proof that outdoor dining spreads COVID-19. And in fact, all three have so far won, and they are now in the appeals court. So it's just, it's something that for all of us to follow and be aware of. I realize that there is no control over the state in terms of what we can do here locally over outdoor dining, but, you know, I'm appealing today to be a little creative. You know, you drive through our various cities, and you see people taking to-go food, sitting on curbs, eating off their cars, eating on top of garbage cans, sitting on walls. It just, it just isn't right. And what I, my ask today is to consider coming up with outdoor picnicking and allowing for tables and chairs to be strategically placed and socially distanced. I mean, the restaurant operators have gone to great lengths to build these parlets. They were, they were maintaining them socially distanced. Let's let the to-go food, let's have a humane place for people to go and sit outside. Same holds true with a place like Del Monte Shopping Center. You know, people deserve to have a spot to sit and dine and not be forced to be eating in the conditions that they're currently eating. There was a study in New York that was released last week with 46 cases were contact traces and studied. And no surprise, the cases were from September through November, and 74% of the COVID spread was through household gatherings. What we're doing, Governor Como actually said so eloquently, is when you ban all restaurant dining, you in fact increase the number of COVID cases. The reality is, you're forcing people to come together indoors when we can actually take control of the outdoors and make it a safe place for people to dine and gather. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for watching that timer, too. Appreciate your comment. Next up, we have Scott, and I'm going to go with first names so that I don't mispronounce. Scott, you are up next. We will unmute you, and you have three minutes to speak.
Hi, it's Bruce, it's Bruce Sckety, but that is fine, you can call me Scott. My name is Scott Bruce Sckety, and I'm a registered nurse in the emergency department at Natividad Medical Center. I would like to begin by thanking Wendy Root Askew for allowing her nurses to be part of her swearing-in ceremony today as her endorsed and successful Californian Nurses Association candidate. I also would like to thank the entire elected Board of Supervisors in advance for hearing what our nurses have to share today about the dangerous and worsening conditions that we're facing as frontline RNs fighting for our patients and community amid a deadly COVID pandemic. As an ER nurse for the past 12 years, I'm used to facing constantly changing and challenging situations. It is what I do, and this is the environment that we thrive in. I'm used to the moments where my decisions determine the outcome of life or death, advocating for the most vulnerable in our community, and working long hours with often limited resources. I can also honestly share that I and my fellow frontline nurses are also honored to serve as zero, ground zero defenders amidst this- uh, ground zero defenders amidst this public health crisis. However, as nurses, we should not be forced to take on both a fight to save our patients and serve our community while also fighting against unsafe decisions by senior administration. Let me give you some examples of what I'm talking about. Because of an already chronic short staff crisis that began long before COVID and upper management's unwillingness to address and work with nurses to prepare, frontline RNs are now being overrun by the surges we repeatedly warned would come. The result is upper management's inaction that we are now only, not only dangerously short-staffed, but we're also running out of beds and room for our patients. Our emergency room, the literal lifeline of our community, has been filled every day with anywhere between 16 to 22 admitted patients every day. These patients stay in our ER for days at a time in many instances. Patients are being discharged from the hospital without ever leaving the emergency room. The ER is now the only department we cannot close. We cannot declare we are full. The patients keep coming and they are sicker and we are exhausted. And we are being forced to carry the weight of these decisions by the administration. Therefore, our emergency room has been forced to spread out into tents and other makeshift areas of the hospital. New units are being haphazardly created for the surge of COVID patients. And nurses are being forced to float and care for patient populations outside of their specialty training in California Title 22 protections. We're also literally being forced to free out some of our own patients in potentially rationed care. To make matters worse, RNs working beyond fatigue and exhaustion because of chronic short staffing are now also being mandated by management to work overtime and extra shifts and that's created additional unnecessary risk. The grave reality is that our county trauma and safety net has literally now turned into a COVID hospital and the community's lifeline is failing. To say the least, we are fighting two wars. One, we cannot see, COVID, and the other with the senior administration who would be supporting nurses, who should be supporting nurses as the first line of defense. Today, I stand with my phone to ask the board of supervisors, junior administration to work with us as agreement to ensure we are protected, staffed, and equipped to do the job we swore an oath to our patients and professions to do. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate your comment and appreciate your service to our community. Um, next up we have Karen. If we could unmute Karen, uh, and allow three minutes for speaking.
Good afternoon and thank you for your time. I am Karen De Segurant with Coastal Cuisine and Catering, excuse me. We are currently a meal provider for the Great Plates Meal Delivery Program and have been since June of 2020. Currently, we serve 50 people and at one point as many as 73 at-risk seniors in Monterey and Carmel. There are currently over 300 seniors at risk that have meal deliveries being terminated on January 7th, 2021. Clients in this program range from 65 years old to 102 and have severe health issues ranging from MS to stage four. Renal disease, cancers, heart surgeries, and muscular dystrophy claim many of our, of these seniors. Many of these clients cannot drive and have been not out of their homes since March when stay-at-home orders have been placed, except for doctor's appointments and tests. They are not able to shop nor purchase their own groceries and have not been able to cook for themselves for many years. Great Plates Meal Delivery Program has kept this at-risk senior population safe, providing healthy nutritious meals seven days a week, three meals a day. Currently, this program is scheduled to end January 7th, 2021. FEMA and the state have already approved extensions of this program until February 6th, but Monterey County has to review and approve their 6.2% share. Remembering however, that Monterey County gets to bill back 5% of these administration costs. Please consider prior to the expiration date of this program and allowing this program to continue so there will not be a break in continuation of services. Please allow these seniors to be safe at home while they wait for their vaccinations. This program has allowed seven restaurants to be saving their businesses. Forty-eight employees have been hired back into the hospitality industries when they were laid off in March. And we have pumped thousands of dollars back into the community by purchasing locally-used and raised produce and Monterey Bay fisheries that are part of this nutritional and healthy program. It is my understanding that the Department of Social Services will be meeting with the Board of Supervisors January 12th to seek approval of this continuance of program. Please do not allow this program to lapse. This week will force 300 meals to seniors who will not have meal programs to survive for the following week.
Thank you Karen. We're out of time, but if you have additional comments, please feel free to email them to the board. Um, next up we have Ms. LJ for three minutes. If we can unmute her microphone and allow three minutes for public comment.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for your time. This is Laura from SNIP in Monterey County. And I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for supporting the citizens and animals in Monterey County. Uh, we definitely appreciate our partnership with the county and, um, and animal services. Cindy has been so helpful. So far, our team has provided three clinics in 2020 with the full update on that to come. Um, in addition, we have another session scheduled for this month. We appreciate the sense of urgency that we have and with the relationship. Um, and we understand that during this time with COVID and the pandemic that there are so many needs for people and animals in our community. We're honored to have our services offered during this critical time in order to prevent animal overpopulation. And our team has met with, um, most of the members of the Board of Supervisors and we appreciate, again, all that you have done for Monterey County. I would also like to say congrats to all the board members who were sworn in today and a congrats to our new Chair, Askew. Um, we are so proud of all that you guys have done so far. Supervisor Lopos served in that role exceptionally and we know you will just pick up right where he left off and take our county to the new direction. So again, we all, we just want to thank you for your support of the SNIP bus team and we look forward to our continued partnership with Monterey County Board of Supervisors and Cindy Burnham and the whole team at the animal services. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Um, next we have Kristi for three minutes. If you can unmute your microphone. Um, we will give you permission to unmute your microphone and we have three minutes.
Thank you. On behalf of myself and registered nurse colleagues, I would like to offer my thanks to the Monterey County Elected Board of Supervisors and fellow community members for listening to us today. My name is Kristi Zavios. I'm a registered nurse in the labor and delivery unit at Monterey County and Natividad Medical Center. I am also a proud resident of Salinas, honored to raise my family here and to work as a county nurse in caring and protecting our community. But today I'm here to ask you to listen very carefully to the serious concerns of our nurses. Without listening to the frontline nurses, you will not hear the needs of our patients. As you might imagine, labor and delivery is a challenging, fast-paced environment. LNG nurses have to make critical life and death decisions at often moment's notice. Yet there is usually no place I feel more comfortable than at my patient's bedside. Unfortunately, that comfort level has become a thing of the past. Deteriorating conditions at our hospital are interfering with the ability to provide safe patient care. In fact, the profit over patient direction our senior administration has chosen to take at Monterey County forces me to wonder every single shift, what could go wrong? When I walk into a typical night shift in our labor and delivery unit, I'm not just worried about taking on extra patients due to the profit over patient decision to close women's services at nearby me Memorial Hospital. I'm not just walking into a chronic short staffing that our upper management team has known about for more than two years and refused to address. I'm not just walking into care and to, to care for and deliver new life into this world, worried if my expectant mother has had vital prenatal care education and is not, and is not also suffering from coronavirus. I'm not just worried whether or not I and my fellow nurses have the necessary protective equipment and required negative pressure rooms to treat COVID-positive patients. On the contrary, I am now also worried what could go wrong when the employer knowingly and intentionally short-staffs our unit. I'm worried what could go wrong when I, as charge nurse, can no longer be that extra hands to, ready to jump in in an emergency and respond to a code or ensure nurses have at least one break during their 12-hour shift and mandatory overtime week after week without end. I'm left to wonder what could go wrong when my manager and director refuse to answer desperate calls for help because it is their night off. I am left to wonder what could go wrong when they force our labor and delivery specialty-trained nurses unto unsafely float to care for adult patients in units or departments outside of our RN specialty training because senior administration refused to hire travelers before multiple patient surges occurred. As nurses, the last thing we want to do is stand in front of podiums and most comfortable at my patient's bedside. Um, but as registered nurses in the state of California, we are ethically and legally required under the Nursing Practice Act to advocate for our patients and report dangerous patient care conditions, even when we would face retaliation. Today I'm calling for your help. Today I'm calling for your help so that I can do what my, I am professionally trained, experienced, and have sworn to do. I'm almost done, sorry. While upper management promised to make changes after our meeting with the chief nursing officer yesterday, nurses also, we, as nurses also know, we cannot continue caring for our patients amid the latest surge without protection in place for us to do so safely. Today, nurses are calling on our elected board of supervisors to make this moment one public health leadership and director, direct senior administration to sign an agreement with staff, with staff loading and key protections in place so that nurses safely advocate and care for our patients. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kristi. And I just got to personally give a shout out to all of our Natividad labor and delivery nurses. You took phenomenal care of me, uh, just over nine years ago when I had my son at Natividad. Um, our final comment, um, raised hand today is from Elizabeth. We'll, uh, give you permission to unmute yourself and we have three minutes on the clock. Thank you. Elizabeth Cruz Vargas, you should have, uh, the ability to unmute yourself and speak for three minutes. Okay, we lost Elizabeth. Um, are there any other public comment? If you are, uh, on Zoom, you would just raise your hand if you're on the phone. Oh, do we have? I'm not sure who's speaking, but go ahead. You have three minutes.
This is Elizabeth. Thank you.
Oh, fabulous. Okay, wonderful.
Good afternoon, um, to our elected Monterey County Board of Supervisors, community members, and fellow registered nurses. Um, my name's Elizabeth Cruz Vargas and I'm a labor and delivery nurse at Natividad Medical Center. As a frontline RN, I understand that our county hospital is, um, going through an unprecedented surge in COVID admissions. And because of this, um, hospital administration has a setup overflow care areas in emergency department, medical surgical, and, uh, intensive care units to place those patients. However, they failed to address the chronic nurse short-staffing crisis that faced us long before the pandemic ever began. And let me give you an example. Back in March of 2020, when COVID hit, our hospital and public health infrastructure was already severely affected due to the failure to retain and recruit nurses and because of unsafe working conditions. And after COVID, this was only worsened by increasing sick calls, worsening unsafe conditions, nurse exhaustion and fatigue and burnout. Senior administration's decision not to hire travelers before there was such a short supply and refusal to work with our union nurses to address these concerns only made it worse. Upper management waited until the last moment to begin mandating RNs to work additional shifts violating California Title II patient ratio laws in order to keep up with the patient influx. And also forced us to flow outside of our specialty-trained care areas as helping hands. Uh, for example, on Christmas Eve, I was one of the first perinatal service nurses to float to medical surgical unit without as much as a five-minute notice. And to take an LND specialty-trained nurse and suddenly have them assume care for an adult patient puts patients, nurse licensure, and the public at risk. We have specialty training for a reason and the rationale that a nurse is a nurse is a nurse goes against the California patient ratio law and places nurses and patients in dangerous situations. Throughout the pandemic, we have been referred to as heroes and I know many nurses shy away from that title. And often we say we are only doing what we need to do. However, the reality is that frontline nurses care for patients' health and safety and is dependent on us. Just yesterday, our nurses delivered over 200 signatures, uh, in a written agreement to stop unsafe practices to our chief nursing officer and she promised to do so. However, we know as registered nurses that we must care for our patients based on written safety policies and protections. Therefore, today, we are asking you, the Board of Supervisors, to stand with us nurses and direct hospital administrators to sign an agreement with our nurses to ensure safety measures and changes we need to advocate for our patients and fight to end this deadly virus. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Uh, we do have another, um, hand raised from the phone number ending in eight, one, zero. If we could allow permission to speak, um, and I believe you need to press star six to unmute yourself so that you have three minutes.
Um, hello, this is Eloise Shim and, um, I'd like to congratulate you, Supervisor Askew, for your, um, for your term there as the chair. And I've known you for a long time. I went to the Mountain Mike's in Eastside Marina and with Jane Parker's, uh, Hot Topics. And you were always very nice and you would encourage me to go up to the mic at the Board of Supervisors chambers. So, good luck with your tenure. Um, you know that from those meetings that I'm a big fan of, of affordable housing and I'm not a big fan of cannabis. I invite you to imagine one square mile for affordable housing. One square mile is as big as the city of Carmel and one square mile is as much legal cannabis is in Monterey County. And that's a conservative estimate according to the mitigated negative declaration report. I, I would like all of the supervisors to think clearly through your decisions as stewards and of the taxpayer money and focus your goals on affordable housing. Because there's a bridge between homelessness and affordable housing, which has been washed out for more than 10 years. So I hope that you focus your goals for the, um, what's right and not just what the wealthy people in Monterey County want. Thank you. And again, congratulations, all of you. I hope you have a great new year and a great tenure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your comment. And I just want to also mention, we, uh, do, the Board of Supervisors do receive all of the communication that is emailed to the clerk of the board at the C O B email address. Um, we're given, uh, hard copies of, uh, emails that are sent to that address. Um, and there is quite a bit of additional public comment that has been provided in writing. You're always welcome to send written communication. Um, and if you include your contact information, it does facilitate our ability to, um, to respond and acknowledge, uh, your communication, um, as well as any feedback or additional information that may be relevant. So there's quite a few, um, communications here in regards to, um, the COVID, uh, response of the county, um, as well as quite a few, uh, communications in regards to the Great Plates Program. So thank you to everyone, um, who took the time to bear with us through this meeting today. We are now moving on to our 1:30 scheduled item, uh, a few hours late. And I'd like to welcome Assistant County Administrative Officer Nick Chulos, um, to, uh, take the lead on this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Um, we have three items to cover this afternoon that are related to the COVID update. Uh, the first is a public health update, what we've generally grouped as a public health update from Dr. Moreno and Kristi Michie, and that includes four components. One is, uh, an update on metrics, another one is a testing update, third is a vaccine update and a discussion of process with the vaccine. And the fourth is a general discussion of where the state might be headed with the stay-at-home order, as best we can determine. The second major item is an, an update from Dr. Gray and Dr. Walls on the status of Natividad Medical Center, um, a patient, uh, count. And number three is an update on disaster service workers. Uh, Irma Ramirez-Bow is going to lead that part. And number three is an update on disaster service workers. Uh, Irma Ramirez-Bow is going to lead that part of it. The TMD messaging update will be, uh, sent out electronically. Mr. Pesculley has a four o'clock meeting that, uh, he needs to attend that we've asked him to attend. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, um.
All right.
Oh, we've got, we've got Dr. Moreno on the line. Thank you.
All right. Um, good afternoon. Chair Ruth Askew, board members, Ed Moreno, Director of Public Health and, uh, your Monterey County Health Officer. Uh, as Mr. Trillo said, I'll, we've been talking a little bit about metrics. We have been able to, um, update the data fortunately. And the Cal Ready system was down this weekend, but, uh, it's up and running with some corrections and some enhancements so that the system runs, uh, faster for, uh, all of us working on the, on that system. Uh, this is the, excuse me. This is the, um, uh, the chart that you, I've shared with you before and we continue to update this. This is the cases uh, COVID-19 in Monterey County with the yellow bar being, uh, orange bar being that, uh, a number of cases that did not require hospitalization and the green part of the bar at the top are the individuals that required hospitalization. And all these cases are plotted based on, uh, if we have it, based on their onset of symptoms. So we do, so we do see this continuing to increase. There's two weeks here, um, that, uh, we're still collecting data for. Um, so we'll need a little more time to see, uh, to see if this is, uh, where the trend is. Uh, if the trend is continuing on this steep incline or if it's changing. This is the, uh, a graph that we, uh, Kristi Michie, one of the epidemiologists, puts together. It uses a seven-day average, uh, which tends to smooth out the curve. And we did have, again, the system was down this weekend. Then also we were, you know, we had two back-to-back, uh, very holidays very close together. And so, uh, some of the testing centers were, uh, closed, uh, because of the holidays. Some of the testing centers actually closed, uh, unfortunately because, um, because COVID is, is trends, is, um, so prevalent now in, in our community. Uh, our testing centers staff are, uh, are getting, uh, impacted by this as well. So the number of cases tested are being done has decreased a little bit. Um, and there's also the, the issues with the, uh, the system, uh, in recent days. So this will have, we need a little more time to determine how this portion of the graph might change supervisors. Um, but what, uh, you'll be hearing from, uh, presenters, uh, in a few minutes. What really matters is at this point is the impact of the pandemic at this point. And the impact is a lot of people are getting sick, severely ill, suffering, um, severe illness, um, uh, going to the hospital and, uh, requiring a hospitalization. And so we are, uh, can, the last few days continue to exceed, um, 200, uh, cases. But you'll have a, a more recent update from, uh, uh, Dr. Gray and, uh, Dr. Walls. But this is, uh, for hospitalizations countywide in all our four hospitals. Uh, moving on to, uh, state health officer, regional state, stay-at-home order. This is the reasonable trans- transition point because the ICU bed availability, uh, has, uh, been significantly impacted, uh, leading to the state health officer issuing a regional stay-at-home order in an attempt to, um, further decrease the opportunities that people have to gather uh, in public settings with people from other households, which we know transmits, uh, vaccine and contributes to increasing case rates. So the state, uh, regional stay-at-home order went into effect December 17th of last year. And I've, uh, taken this from the, uh, from the state website, uh, word for word. Um, I'm sorry, it's, it reads, uh, on the state website, Bay Area region will remain under the order until at least January 8th, uh, with potential to extend depending on four-week ICU capacity projections. The, uh, four-week ICU capacity projections, um, are calculated using four factors. This is the state calculating this. Uh, they use the current estimated regional ICU capacity available. And again, we're in the Bay Area region. They also have a measure of current community transmission. They use, uh, also the current regional case rates. And I shared with you some case rates and the proportion of ICU cases being, uh, admitted. So they have, um, a, a model that they're using, uh, and they're reporting out and, and basically they're looking four weeks into the, into the future. And if the projection four weeks out shows us as a region still being, uh, uh, passing the threshold, meaning less than 15% ICU bed capacity, then we will continue the region and Monterey County's in the region will continue to be under the state health officer, regional state at-home order. And where are we with that ICU capacity? Again, with, this is the orange curve, uh, for, uh, the Bay Area region. The other regions are also depicted here. The worst, the, the, um, regions with the greatest impact and continue to be, uh, the blue line, which is San Joaquin Valley region and the green line, which is Southern California region. Uh, both are very large regions. Um, and, um, ours is the orange line and, uh, since, uh, middle of December, uh, the region has continued to be, and the trend is that it will, it has these, uh, we have fewer and fewer ICU beds available, um, with, uh, and that includes, um, ICU beds that can be staffed with healthcare personnel. Uh, and then, and then the gray is the Sacramento, which has dropped below. And then it was above for several days and is again below, uh, the threshold. So, uh, from what I, what I, I looked quickly at the web- website and it looks like approximately 98% of California residents are, live in the county that is in a region that is under the, uh, regional stay-at-home order. Uh, let's see, this is the ICU bed availability for Monterey County. Uh, I, this is, um, something that, uh, we're looking at. Um, so we have several tools. We have the state model. We have our local calculations. And then you have your regular reports from, uh, local hospital administrators. But the, um, uh, this is information based on what the hospitals here in Monterey County are reporting to the state. And, uh, we have access to that information and we can share that, uh, bed availability based on hospital reporting, uh, with you. And it continues to be low, um, continues to be around 20%. I'm sorry, uh, 20%, um, unfortunately, uh, it looks like it's dipping below 20% in the last week. So, uh, before I move on, is there any questions? I still, I'll, I'll comment a little bit about testing and then I'll move on to vaccines as, in a few minutes. If not, I'll, I'll, that's fine. I'll continue. So with regards to testing, I don't have any slides for you today. But I do want to let you, remind you and let the public know that we continue to, uh, work with the state to do, do what we can uh, to, um, inform the state of the status of our OptumServe sites. Uh, we do know that, um, individual residents here in Monterey County have, have made appointments. They've shown up for their appointments at OptumServe sites and some of the OptumServe sites, uh, have, uh, closed uh, on their, uh, the day of their reservation appointment for testing. And, uh, as I mentioned just a few moments ago, uh, some of the individuals who are, who are staffing these sites, uh, are not well. Uh, they're calling in sick or may have tested positive. And so it's impacting, COVID is impacting every sector, uh, every, every part of this county, including our, our real, very important, uh, health, health, uh, service, um, systems, including our, our state-sponsored, uh, OptumServe testing, uh, centers. So, um, I, I hope, uh, that our, our OptumServe testing staff are, are doing better, that they're improving and, uh, and we, uh, but I also ask for, um, uh, a little bit of understanding from those of us that are, uh, that are out there trying to get tested. It's important service and we want to continue it. Um, but we'll continue to convey to the state what's going on to see if the state who has a contract with OptumServe might be able to, um, uh, make some accommodations and, uh, and, uh, assist Optum Serve in making changes to their staffing models that may, uh, uh, allow uh, the Optum Serve sites to stay open even if somebody, one or more people call in sick at the Optum Serve site. Um, moving on to COVID-19 vaccine. As a reminder that our health department has, uh, a COVID-19 vaccination, uh, planning work group. Uh, the purpose is to review federal and state COVID-19, uh, vaccine guidance for vaccine allocation and vaccine distribution and to propose and develop, uh, with our partnering agencies, uh, and implement vaccination, uh, strategies to back, make vaccine available to, uh, the priority work group, the priority groups in Monterey County. So this is the, um, the, the current, um, this is, this is a current, uh, ACIP, this is the federal level, proposed phase one, uh, and phase two allocation, um, framework. And we are currently in one A and I'll provide more detail there. Um, and we hope that, uh, as we successfully vaccinate most people in, uh, phase one A, we'll be able to get to one B and then later one C and finally the general population. These numbers over here are estimates, uh, across the United States. All right. So in regards to California's COVID-19 vaccine plan, uh, again, we are in phase one A and, uh, tier one. And so our hospitals have received vaccine and have begun, have been vaccinating and are moving on. We'll be moving on to, uh, second doses of vaccine to some of their, uh, their staff. Uh, the skilled nursing facilities, I'll have some information in a moment about them. They're included here, um, and that includes the residents. The paramedics and EMTs, I have an update for you there, and our dialysis centers and also staff of residential and inpatient substance use disorder treatment and mental health facilities. That was something that was added by CDPH. I don't believe it's on their website, but we were given direction through meetings that this group needs to be in tier one, uh, phase one A. I was able to, uh, find on the state website some additional information, uh, that supports our, our intent has been to vaccinate those individuals that are providing the vaccination to others. And so I was able to find on the state website that person's immunizing the prioritized populations in a tier should be offered immunization during or before the same tier. So I was able to find state justification that aligns with what our intent, our plans have been. Uh, phase one A tier two, um, we are transitioning into, uh, tier two. Uh, we have, um, uh, not all at once. We are, again, working with, uh, partnering agencies that have a role to play in either providing services or advocating for these, um, particular groups. Um, and so I can share with you that the primary care clinics, um, and including, um, federal qualified health centers, rural health centers, uh, urgent care clinics are working to, uh, receive and administer, uh, vaccine. And, um, we would, are working with, uh, your interim behavior health director, uh, to look at this group of, um, outpatient, uh, uh, substance use treatment and, uh, uh, mental health facilities and crisis stabilization units and to, uh, develop strategies to immunize that group as well. And then finally, we're not here, uh, really here yet, but since we, we need to focus most, more of our time on tier two before we can start focusing, dedicating a significant amount of time on tier three, but we are in communicate, we are having discussions, uh, to, um, uh, early discussions on, uh, how we would get this, uh, vaccine out to, uh, tier three, which includes the remainder of the, uh, healthcare personnel in Monterey County. I won't read the list, but you can see this is the list of, well, I will read the list. It's the, excuse me, it's the, um, uh, specialty clinics, laboratory mortuary workers, dental and other oral health clinics and pharmacy staff that weren't, uh, in previous settings like pharmacy staff that weren't at the hospital getting immunized. Uh, and people working in mortuary services, which really gets CDPH added, but I don't think it's on their website. I'll be brief here since we're, this will be further down the road, but, uh, California's COVID-19 vaccine plan also includes phase one B tier one, which is, and this is an update of supervisors. This is different. The, the wording here is different than what I've provided to you in the past. And that's because this is wording that's now on the state website. And so, uh, to be, to have consistency with what, um, the public is reading on the state website. Uh, I'll be presenting, uh, this, this wording, which is very similar, but there are some minor differences. But phase one B tier one, uh, will be offered to individuals over 75 and older just based on age because they've, that age group is at high risk of serious illness and individuals at risk of exposure while, when they're working in education, childcare, emergency services, uh, which would be the remes- remainder of the first responders, for example, and, uh, food and agriculture. And then one B tier two is, uh, drops age to 65 to 74. And additional individuals that are at risk for exposure, uh, while they're working. And then extending to other congregant settings, uh, with a risk of outbreak, which includes incarcerated and, uh, settings and homeless individuals. And then finally, uh, one C, uh, again, this, there's some minor changes to the language of supervisors, but very similar to what we, somewhat similar to what we had before. This, um, right now the state is, uh, suggesting that when we get to one C, individuals 50 and over can get vaccinated and, uh, the remainder of the population that's eligible for the vaccine, 16 to 64, if they have conditions that put them at risk for severe illness. And then those are risks of exposure when they're working in these type of, of sectors. And if anyone's interested in, in looking at this for themselves, I've, um, placed the website here on, on this slide. Uh, this is, uh, again, to reiterate that we are in phase one A and we're getting more and more people vaccinated. We haven't finished phase A, but we're already moving to phase B. And it's some, and very shortly, I'm hoping that as we make some significant progress on strategies and then implementing a strategy in one B. And those strategies are now underway and people are getting vaccinated and moving in eventually into, to one C. So we're in one A tier one, uh, excuse me if I misspoke, we're in phase one A tier one, moving to tier two, excuse me, and tier three. And then, um, excuse me, uh, when we are nearly completed with phase, with tier three, excuse me supervisors, tier three, we'd like to move into one B, but we'll be working closely with the state of California, um, as they, if they may have, um, a direction and requirements before moving into one B. So I apologize, apologize if I misspoke there. Um, here's some numbers, uh, that I'd like to share with you. This is the total, um, vaccine allocation to Monterey County. Unfortunately, uh, every, every allocation that's been afforded to us, uh, we've accepted through either us ordering it or partnering agencies have submitted orders. So we've been able to receive all of our allocation thus far. With regards to the Pfizer vaccine, we've had, uh, a little over 5,800 first doses. Those are doses intended to be given to healthcare personnel for the first dose. And the second doses are, uh, have been ordered and almost 3,000, uh, available for second doses. And as far as the Moderna vaccine, we've had a total of 8,300 doses allocated and, uh, ordered and, and received here in Monterey County for a little over 17,000 total doses that have come into Monterey County and are, are being, and people are being vaccinated. Where is it going? Uh, I can share with you that, uh, Salinas Valley Hospital has received 1,900, uh, Pfizer doses and 1,400 Moderna doses, as has Natividad and CHOP. Me Memorial, um, smaller hospital couldn't, uh, take, uh, a full Pfizer, um, shipment. So they received 500 doses of Moderna. Clinic Salud, uh, is receiving 300 doses. Doctors on duty, 600, and doctors on duty will be assisting, has, has offered to assist in vaccinating first responders. Uh, I'm sorry, um, paramedics and EMTs at this point. And then our, your, your county clinics have received 600 and they started, uh, vaccinating, uh, this week. You're, you're vaccinating your, uh, employees who are healthcare personnel. And then Big Sur Health Clinic, uh, received 100. And they've also offered to vaccinate some of the EMTs and paramedics, uh, down further south along the coast. Uh, what you don't see here is, uh, unfortunately, yet is the, uh, Solida Medical Group, uh, which is a very, very important provider of healthcare services or Pinnacle and other urgent care. The reason, main reason is because they have not been approved by the state, uh, to receive, um, vaccine. But we are, we're, um, encouraging them to continue to the, the process of applying. And we today followed up with the state, uh, to make sure that when those applications go in, that they become prioritized uh, for priority, uh, review for Monterey County. Uh, so, um, at this point, um, I'd like to just share, um, that the, uh, our first, we had our first two clinics. We, we've received some vaccine as well. That part of that, apologies, that wasn't on the list. We received some vaccine here in the, in public health as well. And we've been able to, um, uh, have, start our, our PODs, our PODs, which, uh, stands for Point of Distribution. Um, we're, uh, these pods, uh, started on Saturday and we had another one on Sunday. Uh, they're targeting the tier one A population, which includes EMTs and other emergency medical personnel. And we were, um, able to vaccinate approximately 200, um, employ, uh, EMT responders at the, the two clinics. One was at CSUNB, uh, staffed by us. The other was, um, uh, we, we took vaccine out to, um, Monterey Fire and they have a waiver, so their paramedics can vaccinate each other and others. And so they, uh, were able to vaccinate. So combined, we had about 200 EMTs. And over the next two weeks, we have, uh, clinics scheduled, uh, we have clinics scheduled and we have clinics in the works. Um, and, uh, we will continue to partner with a variety of, of agencies. And we will continue to partner with variety of agencies to bring together, combine our resources, whether it's vaccine, staffing, location, support, security, what if, what, everything that's necessary to put on a point of distribution vaccine clinic. Almost, almost finished with the, my update supervisors. Next is the long-term care retail pharmacy partnership. I do have an update here. Part A, which includes skilled nursing facilities and assisted living facilities has been activated. And there are three clinics that will be, that are being scheduled for the sites. First clinics for the first dose, few weeks later, a clinic for the second dose and a third, a few weeks after that, a third clinic for catch-up doses for staff and for residents of these facilities. And I've been, I was notified today that eleven of the sixteen local skilled nursing facilities have their first clinic scheduled and some of them are being vaccinated already. So that's good news for the staff and also for, who are also being impacted by COVID. And also the skilled, the residents who are at the highest risk, very high risk for a serious illness. And then part B has been activated. So this is something that I'm working, will be working with your department of social services to get more information about all these, and I, all these types of facilities. And I apologize if I, I haven't incorrect, had some errors in the names of these type of facilities, but as much as we can get information so we can idea of the magnitude of the effort that the pharmacy is going to require to get a vaccine eventually to these groups after they're done with the long-term care, excuse me, the skilled nursing facilities. So we'll, we'll want to keep, keep up to date on, on the progress with this group as well. And then I think this is, might be the last slide, the couple more slides supervisors, thank you for your patience. Just a reminder that in order to receive and redistribute or reposition vaccine, healthcare agencies must have CDC approval to do so and must have been approved by the state to be on their COVID-ready portal. Without those, agencies cannot receive or redistribute vaccine, which is very important for us to make sure that vaccine doesn't sit with one agency with, because they don't have anyone to vaccinate, that we can get it moving within the county. So we can get people vaccinated, so the state can see that we're vaccinating. So the state will continue to give us vaccine through future allocations. There's been, there continues to be efforts to notify groups as, as the vaccination strategies are implemented and clinics are set up. We in public health are currently have been working directly with employers to vaccinate phase one healthcare workers. Working through the employers allows the employers to take that information and pass it on to their employees and, and encourage their employees to sign up with the appointments that are made available to them. Are the healthcare workers, if there are any healthcare workers who believe that they should be immunized in phase one A tier one or tier two, which we're in right now, we recommend they contact their employer to get information. If their employer doesn't have information for them, then the employer needs to get a hold of us and we'd be happy to talk to them if they're a healthcare provider as to where they're at, tier one, tier two, and what work is being under, underway to make that available to their employees. As we move forward, we have been issuing health advisories, been updating our webpage, continue to have for the most part, weekly media briefings and also media releases provided so that as our county moves through these different phases and tiers, we continue to do what we can to inform the groups that are, that are, where their operators get vaccinated, such as the medical providers and employers and, and as we move through the tiers and phases, the public. Here's an example of a health alert that went out in December notifying primary care providers that there's a system for them to enroll and encouraging them to enroll so that they can order vaccine to vaccinate their own staff. But even if they don't want to vaccinate their own staff, they may want to vaccinate their, their, their patients as we move into different tiers and phases, excuse me, move into different phases. And so in order to vaccinate their, their patients, they will still need to get enrolled with, and approved by CDPH to have access to the portal to receive and administer vaccines. This is our current webpage, it's very small print, but just to show you what we've included and Kristi Miesch has put a lot of effort into this. We're answering questions like regarding the safety of COVID-19 vaccine, it's a priority. There's a limited supply of COVID vaccine, but supplies will continually increase in the weeks and months that follow. And when there's limited supply, some groups are recommended to receive the vaccine first. And then we, this is just the top portion of the, the tier structure, just showing where we are in the tiers, the groups in those tiers, what the current, it's, it's a summary, but the current plans for vaccinations, the plans to notify those that can, will be able to get vaccinated and the stats. And you can see the first groups in tier one, we're in progress and we're in progress. This is just the first, the top of the, of the table. We, this is information that's on our website. There's other things that people should know that if they go to the website, they'll, they'll find this is, hopefully they'll find that this is helpful. And this is an example of something we're working on that will be pushing through social media. It's much more concise with, you can see check marks will, as we move through tiers, will be updating this, so we're working on this right now. So again, it's concise and hopefully this will be another way to make it a little bit easier for individuals who are wondering where they are and whether or not they should be contacting their employer to get back, to find out if they can get vaccinated. And we also work in, in other languages as, as well. So that finally is my update. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Dr. Moreno, for all of that information. I think we've have our Nativodat hospital update next with Dr. Gray and Dr. Walls.
Hi, good afternoon.
And Dr. Moreno, are you able to stay on the line until after for questions? Okay, thank you. All right, Dr. Gray, Dr. Walls, it's all you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Askew and supervisors. To provide a quick update on our hospital numbers, over the Christmas holiday, we experienced a significant, a significant increase in our overall census. We topped out at a hundred and sixty total inpatients, which was a record for our facility. As of today, our total census is in the one forties. This morning, we had sixty-five hospitalized patients with COVID-19. So we, we continue to be very busy. We do use, we are using some contingency beds to, to accommodate our patient flow. On the staffing front, registry staff were sparse over the holidays. However, we currently have sixty registry staff on the ground and we have twenty-nine additional registry staff confirmed for, for the month of, an additional twenty-nine coming in throughout January. On the immunization front, we've vaccinated just over eleven hundred employees. We'll be doing our second dose of the Pfizer vaccine this coming weekend. And we continue to encourage folks to, to, to get the, the COVID vaccine. So I, I think in summary, the hospital remains very busy. I think that we, we, we have contingency plans in place to accommodate the needs and certainly happy to answer any questions from, from the board members.
Anything to add, Dr. Walls?
No, thank you.
Okay, fabulous. Thank you so much, Dr. Gray. We will just go through the full presentation, I think, and then bring it back for questions from the board. So next up, we have Irma Ramirez-Bauer, human resources director, for an update on our disaster service worker program. Is I see Irma? Oh, wonderful. Hi, Irma.
Hi there, and congratulations Chair Askew and congratulations to our re-elected board members. And it's a pleasure to talk to you this afternoon and just share with you where we are with our disaster service worker program. Would like to share with you that we have been working very closely with our Department of Social Services and our Office of Emergency Services to develop a survey that we're going to be sending out to all our employees. In fact, Charles McKee is going to be sending out the survey as a mandatory for all employees to complete the survey. And we hope to have identified individuals for our, our alternative care sites, housing sites, excuse me, by next week, if at all possible. Also would like to share with you that at last month's meeting, we had shared that we were working with Chris Donley from our WEOA program to be able to identify individuals who can help support this program. And currently, they have identified six individuals and they're right now in the process of back grounding those individuals. So they're, they're going to be supporting us to fill those critical needs at our housing sites. With that, I have nothing else to report.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that update, Irma. And I believe that Nick Puskoli with TMD Marketing would be sending a written report. Is that correct? Okay, so we will watch our emails for written report from DM, TMD Marketing.
Madam Chair, if I could just, just add in a little bit to what Irma was talking about with the disaster service workers. You know, we talked about this, I think, at our last board meeting and, and the need still is there. And it's not just for the alternative housing sites, that's one of the needs, but we have other, we have other jobs as far as the emergency operations center process goes. There's, there are various positions and a lot of the departments have stepped up, but, but we still need other departments to step up and, and employees to step up to take those assignments when they're contacted. And they'll be contacted after they do the survey, after they complete the survey. And as Irma said, we're going to send out a new survey later this week and everybody should complete it. It's been updated and we want to make sure that we have everybody's information and it, we understand some departments have provided more additional help than others. And we will take that into account as we try to take, you know, people into this, into this program. It's a critical program at this time, as everybody can understand because of the pandemic. And we appreciate every, everybody's offer of help when they do, but we, we, you know, I just say that we, you know, we had some good, good response early on, but we've, we've been lacking in response recently. And so that's why we're going to send out a new survey and we're going to make it mandatory for everybody to, to reply because every county employee is a disaster service worker. And we want to make sure that we are treating all, the whole county workforce equitably. We're also going to look at trying to see about how we can backfill, if necessary, any of those departments that, that supply workers from a program that is not, it doesn't come from general funds, if they're funded from state or federal sources. So I just want to urge everybody to recognize the importance of this. And when you're, when you as a supervisor or manager or department head are, have a request for one, for one of your employees to work as a disaster service worker, we think it's important for you to say yes at that time.
Thank you for that additional information, Charles. And I am, just as I'm speaking for myself, support, support the disaster service program and hope that our employees and all of our management are supporting the opportunity for their employees to participate. We do have a number of board comments, I'm just going to work my way through it and we'll start with Supervisor Lopez.
Thank you Supervisor, Chair Askew. I do have a couple of quick questions for Dr. Moreno. Dr. Moreno, I know today's top media stories across the spectrum focused on what percentage of doses that had been sent to counties had actually been administered. I'm wondering, do we know that number here in Monterey County? And would it be possible to track that number to share with the public moving forward, either on a weekly basis or daily, depending on how that data gets back to your department?
Yeah, thank you Supervisor. So we have, in order to calculate what percentage of vaccine has been administered, we need minimal two numbers. We need a numerator and a denominator. The denominator is the total number of allocations that have been distributed to Monterey County and its various agencies. Numerator essentially how many people have been, have actually been vaccinated. So we have the denominator, what we need is the numerator, and that is the, the number of people who have been vaccinated. We're looking into that. We're looking to see if we can get that number through the CARE, the California Immunization Registry, specific for Monterey County and whether we can also distinguish a first dose from, or the number of doses, first and second doses. So we want to look at not just how many, if we can do this, we want to look at not just how many vaccines have been administered, how many people have also received the recommended two, two dose in the course of vaccine. So we're, we're definitely looking at trying to, working, I believe with IT to see if we can pull that data from the CARE system.
Thank you. I know that the community would appreciate that transparency and I just wanted to push that through as I've heard that from several different commenters. The next is, I've heard certain counties or states have no waste lists for some of those doses that might come up to expire soon. It's a, if you can commit to being to an administration point within a half hour and if the vaccine is essentially on its last legs, it's better that no vaccine go unused. I know that there was two large media stories this morning about this idea this morning and there was a lot of positive response to the concept. I'm just wondering if you see any value for us to at least put it together, a system to track folks willing to be at a firehouse or a clinic within a half hour, should we have doses that are close to expiring and need to get those out into the community?
So thank you for that suggestion. Well, we can definitely look into that. At this time, the, the organizations that we're, that we're working with that have received vaccine have been able to identify individuals either within their organization and to vaccinate or are identifying groups outside their organization. And if we can, if we can continue to do this successfully, hopefully the number, the instances where we have a vaccine that's about to expire will be at, at a minimum. It has to do, to be successful, there's several things we have to look at. We have to look at the, the spacing of the, of the vaccine clinics that are offered. So when we speak, when we have clinics every other day and we, we don't, we don't have clinic, we try not to have clinics every, more than, than the expiration date of some vaccine that's in, in refrigeration, we can usually use up the last bit before we open up a new line. So we want, with good planning, to be able to actually avoid those, those situations. But as we get to further on, this is, this is an evolving situation. The strategies that we're using now to vaccinate EMTs and dialysis center workers is going to be different than the strategies we're going to be using for larger groups of individuals as their priority group is up for vaccination. So we'll keep definitely, keep that in mind. We definitely do not want to waste any vaccine.
Thank you. I appreciate it. That's it for me, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you very much. I believe I have Supervisor Adams next.
Thank you Chair Askew. This is a question for Dr. Moreno and that was the, the brightly colored orange document that talked about the progress in, in the vaccination and the plan. Can you tell me when we expect that might be up on our website, on the health department's website?
Yeah, yes Supervisor. So hopefully soon, I think we're going to be looking at getting that through social media because it's a smaller icon, it's got less information on there. And that would be, I don't have an answer for you. I'd have to check with Karen Smith, who's our, the health department's public information officer to find out if we might be able to get that, that, and specifically which social media outlets we're going to be focused on.
Thank you very much. Thanks for you. And then my next question or comment is for Mr. McKee. And that is that, could I suggest that when you send the survey out to everyone, that you add the caveat about overtime pay for some of the work that's done? I think that might be helpful for people to know. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much Supervisor Adams. Supervisor Phillips?
Thank you. Dr. Moreno, I know we're coming upon the termination of the stay-at-home order and I know we've talked about and people are kind of anticipating it's going to get extended, but can you tell us anymore about that? People in businesses are asking.
Oh, sure. So what, what I can share is that the order is in place, the state order is in place for, for at least three weeks and we're coming up, I thought it was January sixth, the state website says it's January eighth, that it's in effect till. And then the state will make it, the state will make a determination as to whether or not the term they use is to extend. I think actually what happens is it's in place until I think actually what happens is it's in place until the health officer rescinds that order upon the region. So it's just basically in place, I believe. And it's, as far as the planning that goes into, that's necessary for businesses to ramp up again, I would say at this point, from what I can tell, and looking at the trend that I shared with you, it doesn't, it doesn't appear that our, the models of this, based on the models that the state is using, that we're going to be notified that it's going to be ending. I think, I suspect what most likely would happen is the state will say that, I don't have to wait and see, but I suspect they're going to say that the projections four weeks out don't show that we're, I see capacity is going to be above the 15%. So we'll know for sure, hopefully, probably maybe Thursday or Friday, hopefully the state will give us some information, and not wait too much, too much longer than January 8th for, for the benefit of the businesses, so they can know as soon as possible whether or not it's extended and, and the circumstances of that extension. So I wish I could tell you more, but that's all we've got right now.
All right. Thank you. And my next question is, people are asking, well, when is, when am I going to be able to get the vaccine? And what kind of timeline? And I know you're reluctant to, to overcommit, but is there anything we can do about getting the word out on the timeline as we go, as we're going through the tiers? And then you touched on it briefly, but how are the people going to get notified that we're in their tier, come in and get, get their vaccine?
Right. So what we, what we have on our website is, is information for anyone that may fall into one of the phases or tiers. But the information is not detailed for each individual tier. And part of that is because we, Supervisors, because we are developing strategies for each group within the tiers that is somewhat unique to that group within each tier. And the strategies also include the notification and communication that, that, I guess, strategies that we're going to be, to be using. So strategies that we're using right now, which include going through the employer and having, giving the employer everything they need to make vaccination available to their employees. That strategy and the communication through the employer may be different as we move into groups and different tiers, which are much larger, people that may not be, if we move further down, people who may not be employed, but still fall into a priority group. So, but that's probably the best explanation I can give for why we don't have detailed information for the groups in the tiers further down in the framework. As far as timelines, so that's, that's for information and methods of communication. As far as timelines, if we had, well, we either still information that we don't have and we're firing, or that we do get, but it's not, not consistent. So for example, we do know what type of groups are going to be, type of residential congregate living facilities are going to be getting vaccine from the pharmacies, CVS or Walgreens. But we don't know, I don't yet at this time know how many individuals fall into those, into those groups. The other thing is Supervisor, is that the amount of vaccine that gets diverted, that comes into California, and then gets diverted within California to the CVS and Walgreens varies from week to week. So I can tell you that, we were just notified today from the state that the next shipment, or the allocations that we just got, we're getting notified about today, as far as those allocations, almost all the Pfizer vaccine is getting diverted to the pharmacies that are going to be vaccinating, the skilled nursing facilities. And so, and so that's, that takes out a good portion of the vaccine that's left to come to local jurisdictions to get to our healthcare facilities. So it changes from week to week, and the number of vaccines that we get changes from, from week to week. The state would like to have consistency for us to be able to plan and do create some timelines, but thus far, there really has been some inconsistency. It's just, it just changes over, or has changed since they started rolling out the allocation. So the timelines are going to be very, again, but I can't provide timelines at this point, which I understand could be discerning for a lot of people who have just been waiting for such a long time to get vaccinated, and have been doing all the right things to stay at home and avoid getting exposed. But I would be very hesitant to try to create timelines, which could lead to disappointment from people who are counting on getting a vaccine by a certain date.
Understood. And I appreciate, appreciate that. Are we getting, are we getting enough vaccine? I mean, are we hampered in, in vaccination by not getting enough vaccine to keep moving forward? Are you comfortable that we're, we're getting enough to start moving, to keep moving through the tiers?
We, very, very good question Supervisor. I think that the rate at which the vaccine is coming in is, is adequate for the, where we're at in planning. However, given, given the option to get more vaccine, I think we would, we would definitely opt for getting more vaccine than we're getting now. And that's because if we had more vaccine, we'd be able to probably plan to move a little bit faster through the tiers and bring on, bring on additional partners and partnering agencies to finalize strategies to get to the larger groups that lie ahead to get vaccinated. So right now, I think it's, honestly, I think it's adequate. But given more vaccine, I can tell you, we would, we would, we would work harder if we had more vaccine, and we would, we'd get this rolled out faster.
I, and I know you mentioned about having the employers get involved, and I know Supervisor Adams and I have met with and are going to meet with the hospitality people, and they're, when, when we come to the food and ag tier, tier one, one B, tier one, I know they're very anxious to use their resources to accumulate their people and citizens in that way. So I, I, I think the business community can play a big part in facilitating the vaccine.
That's great. Thank you.
And finally, just maybe to, to Charles, but is there a possibility of the people who step up to be the disaster service workers, if they are coming in contact, could, could we move them to the front of the line to get vaccine to? I, I know some of, some of our people are a little reluctant to step up there, just because of the rest of their family. So just throw that out to our esteemed leader.
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Phillips. My understanding is that the Health Department has already started working with the crew from Social Services who are leading the effort on, on providing staffing at the alternative housing sites to get them vaccinated. They're, they're putting them at the right, right, right spot at the line, because they are right there working with COVID-positive patients.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Moreno.
All right. And Luis Alejo?
Well, going last, my question's already been asked and answered, so I just wanted to stress a few points. One, for Dr. Moreno, was just the request for that data on how we're doing on vaccination rollout on the Phase 1A. Something has been requested by other constituents. I just wanted to chime in there on, on the, and certainly reiterate the importance of, of making proper preparations and planning, so that when those other significant number of vaccinations come in for the Phase 1B, which includes grocery and agricultural workers and, and first responders, that we're ready to go to be able to roll that out effectively and efficiently. But the question that Supervisor Phillips asked comes up, because small businesses are hurting, and they're trying to see some light at the end of the tunnel sometime soon. And I was glad just to see the, the press release by Governor Newsom about a proposed equitable $4.5 billion relief program for businesses, which is, couldn't come at a better time. I think there's an estimated $26 billion surplus in the budget. Some of that obviously is perhaps these $4.5 billion, but we know that so many businesses right now are hanging on to dear life. And I just wanted to weigh in, knowing, recognizing that that sacrifice and that hurt is there, and that relief from the state, and another, and added relief from the federal, from Congress couldn't, needs to come sooner rather than later. The only other question I'd bring up, it's because it's happened in some other counties. I was on a call with fellow supervisors on, on Monday night, last night, and, and they had, they had an incident where some vaccines were not properly stored, or refrigerator went out, and they were quickly able to make sure that those vaccines did not go bad, and that county employees and sheriff deputies were able to utilize those, rather than having those get lost out. Do we have a contingency plan in case we have a fridge that goes out, or something happens that we're not going to have one of those incidents in Monterey County where we're scrambling to try to get, to make sure we're making use of those vaccinations that need to be used within a very short amount of time? I think in the county, yesterday, they had to find people to get vaccinated within two hours. Do we have our contingency plan ready to go?
All right. Thank you Supervisor Alejo. So we're following state vaccine program guidance and requirements, which we've been following for, for a very long time. We're required to have refrigerators and freezers that meet certain criteria. We're also required to have data loggers and temperature monitors on refrigerators and the freezers. And with those, if the temperature in that unit goes too high or too low, an alarm goes off, and it goes to, I apologize, I don't remember which alarm company we're contracted with, but we get notified that there was a divergence in the, in the temperatures. And then we have a certain amount of time to get to that refrigerator or freezer and check to see what happened. And then we have choice, if we can move the vaccine to another refrigerator or freezer, and we do have backup freezer capacity now here in the department, and move it to another freezer or refrigerator, so that it doesn't go to waste. So that's actually our first line of fence, which is what we've been doing for quite some time. And a lot of the, all of the healthcare providers who are, participate in the state's vaccine program also have to meet those requirements. So that's our first line of fence to protect the vaccine. And we, and I and others take, have annual training on receiving, storing, and monitoring refrigerator frozen vaccine. And so the ongoing training is also very important as well. As far as a backup, I can check with, that's a good point, I'll check with our staff when we're done here about a contingency plan for that, in the event that, for example, a freezer goes bad, and if the vaccine thaws, then it does actually go into a shorter period of time to use the vaccine. And so we would want to put that vaccine in front of the other vaccines that have a longer shelf life, and use those at our next clinic. So I hope to avoid a situation where we have to find people vaccinate in a number of hours. I think they'll just be moving vaccine to another, up to the front of, of the, of the line for being used. But we'll definitely look into that, so it does, hopefully doesn't, we have plans to do it in the event that we get in that situation. Thank you.
Right. No, I just wanted to make sure that we're planning for every potential scenario, and certainly we don't want to have an example where any of those, those scarce vaccinations are not utilized, and, and just with proper preparation, we could plan for, for that worst-case scenario. Thank you.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Alejo. Excellent question. So I, so a couple of questions. I do know that our Health Department staff is working incredibly hard under just exceptionally demanding circumstances. I hear, I hear that the community still wants more information, wants more access, wants more understanding of how the, the process is working. And the urgency that I hear and see from the nurses who were on the phone today, from EMTs earlier in the year, from some of my friends who fall into that category of 65 years and older, who are wondering, when do I get my vaccine? There's almost a sense of panic that I hear in their voice when I'm talking to them or reading their messages. And so I think the question that I have is, is about what the process is, and who, who is, who is the team that is making the decisions, that's bringing forward recommendations, that's reviewing the state guidelines, and then deploying out our vaccination program? Who does that consist of? Is it a task force? Who's a part of that task force? How, how does it meet? If we could add, I think, some transparency around what, what's happening, that the public can see and understand that we're not just flying by the seat of our pants, that we really do have a group of people who are committed and dedicated to developing these recommendations and taking action on them. I think it would bring a lot of comfort or security to those who, who need to just feel, feel safe that they're, that these things are being, being managed well. And when we hear Dr. Moreno speak, it does sound like, you know, there's, there's an answer to every question that, that I've been able to bring forward. And I feel at peace and comfortable knowing that we do have phenomenal staff in place. But finding additional ways to, to convey that back out to the community, and include opportunities so that when we say, you know, if, if you're not able to get a hold of your employer, but you think you've been missed in the immunization process, you know, to contact us, meaning the county, but under, like, what is the process for that to happen? So that's, that's one sort of general broad question, that I don't know that we have a clear answer to today, but I'll put that out to CIO McKee and our Health Department folks. A couple of other questions that I have was, there are quite a few people who want to know what the status of the Great Plates program is. My interest, whether it's Great Plates or Meals on Wheels, ensuring that we have some sort of warm handoff and clear communication, again, back out to the community. You know, a family member who's participating in Great Plates, who has yet to be notified that there was an end to the program, or communicated with that Meals on Wheels has a, another nutrition, senior nutrition program that's available. So we'd like an update on that. And then curious with the issues that the Natividaad nurses mentioned today, and respond to, to staffing issues at Natividaad. I know we're short on nurses across the board, but again, I think that there's an, the question and interest that I would have is in ensuring that our communication is clear. You know, I spoke to some folks earlier, and they're saying, we know that the state is allowing waivers, but, but have we applied for a waiver? Are we planning to apply for a waiver? I think having some of that information clearly communicated with open lines of communication back and forth would be really helpful. So I'll throw those questions back to you, Charles. Thank you.
Well, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll, I'll start with the last one first, in that I know it's obviously a challenging situation for all healthcare providers, and it's all hands on deck, for lack of a better analogy. And, you know, it's one of those situations, and it's, and you can hear in the voices of those nurses, that their willingness to, to be there on the front lines, and to be, to stand up when they can. And I know the hospital administration, you know, has been working on, I came up with the term they use, to, you know, to have, you know, all those nurses who may not, you know, come in contact regularly with the patients, adult patients, you know, to do it in a way that is, you know, most safe, and also recognizing that, that they, that everybody needs the help. So I would suggest that maybe we can have a presentation at our next board meeting from, from Natividaad about some of the issues surrounding the staffing, and, and, you know, how we can best address those kind of challenges, because they are obviously a very challenging situation, no doubt about it. And if there were extra, if there are extra nurses, I think right now, they'd probably be in Los Angeles, and, you know, rightly so. Not that we don't need them, but I think they're, they're really the ones that are feeling the brunt right now. On the Great Plates, I understand Lori Medina is going to try and bring something next week, or Department of Social Services, recognizing that they were trying to figure out, are they going to get extended, not extended? And so hopefully we'll be able to bring something to the board next week on that. That's, that's what she's scrambling to do at the moment, I know that. And then finally, on the transparency, I think, good, good points that you and others have, have brought up. At the suggestion, I think Supervisor Alejo, the Health Department is working on putting on a webinar, so that there can be a broader, you know, participation from the public and, and potentially the media, and just, you know, so that we can get some of those questions answered, asked and answered, out there on, on some of these issues. And I think as, as most people could appreciate, the logistics of scheduling each one of these groups and industries and, you know, individuals is, is challenging, and you don't want to unduly raise expectations, because people are going to start saying, well, wait, I thought it was my turn. And so that's why I think you can hear in Dr. Moreno, the reluctance, saying, you know, we'll have this one by that date. It's, it's a very challenging logistical situation, and they're, they're definitely scrambling and making sure that they're doing it, and they're doing it very thoughtfully, and rolling it out for each, for each segment, and getting the, the... thoughtfully and rolling it out for each for each segment and getting the infrastructure in place for each segment as it goes along, as opposed to saying, guess what, you're not, you know, you're going to you're going to be on this date. It's making sure that those whoever is next in line under the tiers, under the phasing, that it's done in an organized manner. And they're working on it. But I think the more the more transparency we can have, the more information we have up on the website. And we'll keep trying to push it out, the more, you know, and get that out there. And I think the webinar will help and continue to have these these presentations.
Thank you very much for that. And I see Dr. Moreno has his hand up. And then we'll circle back into Supervisor Lopez.
All right. Thank you, Chair Vasquez. So I'll limit myself to the one part of the question that you had about who's making the decisions. I'll try to keep it brief. You, as a county board, have a Public Health Emergency Preparedness Coordinator, Mr. Stellar, with regards to COVID vaccine. He works with Gary Millay or his designated staff at the EOC for resource requests to to put these clinics on. He works with the first responders, the captains of the various departments, law enforcement or their designees for security. He'll be working with them to, just like we did with the employers, when their turn comes around, they'll work with them to get the law enforcement officers and others notified of how to sign up. You also have a Hospital Preparedness Coordinator, John Greathouse. He works with the all over the skilled nursing facilities with their managers and infection prevention folks. And so he's, we have regular meetings with them. And a lot of that time now is spent on COVID. Our Chronic, our Chemical Disease Prevention Coordinator or Manager, excuse me, works with infection prevention practitioners in all of our hospitals. And many of those in management, the hospitals that are responsible for the housing and moving of patients and infectious patients and infection control recommendations. So he's also involved. Our Assistant Director Krista Mieschi meets weekly with hospital executives to discuss a variety of things. Right now, it's COVID vaccine testings and isolation and COVID vaccines. So our Assistant Director of Public Health is working at the highest level with the hospitals. And Krista Hanny, who's a manager for policy evaluation and planning, has been very instrumental, working with ag leaders, working with administrators, executive directors for community-based organizations. And she will become even more probably more involved when we start moving into those those groups. And then finally, our county Immunization Coordinator, Angela Glassdome, works regularly with school nurses and works with every clinic that's involved with the state's immunization program and will be vaccinating against COVID vaccine. She has very strong, long time working relationships with all those individuals who were the point of contact and lead for the QHDs, the community clinics, the rural health clinics, the smaller clinics that provide primarily services to managed care medical recipients. She has those connections and a long history of setting up clinic, vaccine clinic. So to answer, so the end, I forget to the end of my response to your question, there's a variety of people who are assisting and coordinating internally and with other agencies to make private consensus decisions on how to move forward. And that's something that maybe Charles, Mr. McKee, can I can have a discussion with him if he chooses to see if this is the type of information that might be helpful to share in a type of community forum.
Great. Thank you very much. I think I think that the more information we can provide, the more reassuring it will be for the community who typically doesn't have a need to engage with public health systems to to know that there really are a whole, a whole series of things that are being taken care of. Let's see here. Supervisor Lopez has his hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly reiterate one piece and ask one question. So the reiteration is just that, you know, Supervisor Lejo and I are the COVID ad hoc standing committee and the on the ag side, and the ag folks are prepared when we need access to their databases. So we know who employees of the ag industry are. And so just want to thank them for coming forward with that offer and reiterate it. The question I have for you, Dr. Moreno, is that I understand that as of yesterday, the state has granted a waiver to allow dentists to provide the COVID vaccine. And so I'm wondering if you've reached out to the Dental Society here in Monterey County, or if that's something we intend to do soon to make sure that any resources they may have for us to help administer the vaccine are brought to bear as soon as possible.
Thanks for bringing that to my attention. I wasn't aware of that. What I can say is, we do, we, the dental, the dentist, oral hygiene groups and and their representatives through the dental associations are definitely on our list of individuals that we want to get to as we move closer to moving down the tiers. We definitely are encouraging those agencies that can obtain waivers to become vaccinators, to go through the process, to read what the requirements are, and to make a decision whether or not they can make that commitment and be available. So we will probably reach out to them. We reached out to our fire departments who have EMTs and paramedics to encourage them to go through the process to expand the number of EMTs and paramedics that can vaccinate. We're looking forward to hopefully getting more pharmacists in California and Monterey County who will be available to vaccinate. And we will, thank you for letting me know about this. We will add the dental dentists as a group of potential vaccinators and pursue that as well.
Thank you.
Fabulous. Thank you for that. I'm going to move now to public comments. Once again, if you're on Zoom and you would like to make a brief comment, we are running short on time today. So I would just ask that comments be as brief as possible, conveying your your message. You may raise your hand on Zoom, or you may press star nine to raise your hand on the phone, and we will work our way through public comment. First up, I have Kim Simler. If we could unmute Kim Simler so that she may make comments.
Thank you very much, Chair Vasquez. So happy to say that. So quickly, and I know you can't answer my questions, but this would be really useful. Businesses need to prepare for reopening. And it would be great if we were, we knew when we would know when we will reopen. Secondly, it would be wonderful to have the media briefing open to the public. And I know that it's available post the briefing, but it would be great if it was open and available live and promoted similar to the way the governor promotes his. And then also, you talked, Dr. Moreno, and thank you so much for everything you do. You talked about allocation of vaccinations. And I wasn't sure whether that meant we have those right now in hand, or that's what we have been assigned for the immediate future. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kim. And I believe that Jennifer had also indicated she wanted to speak, if she's still on the line, Jennifer Jean-Pierre. I do not see. Okay, if we could unmute Jennifer so she can make a comment on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi. Thank you Supervisor Vasquez. Speaking about what I had said earlier, I just kind of wanted to finish since I got cut off because of time. Monterey County nurses want an elected, are asking our elected Board of Supervisors to know that as registered nurses, we will always run into danger to care for our patients. We are not afraid to fight against an illness, a trauma, or a deadly virus. But we should not have to fight or to save our patients and neighbors from a deadly pandemic and an upper management who refuse to support, listen, and work with us. Nurses know we can fight this pandemic with courageous leadership and support. Today, our nurses are calling on each and every one of our elected supervisors to stand with the frontline RNs of Monterey County, act as the leaders and defenders of public health, and direct senior administration to sign an agreement with vital protections in place so registered nurses can safely advocate and care for our patients. Thank you all in advance for standing as leaders and nurses advocates so that we can concentrate on advocating for our patients and defeating this deadly virus. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Let's hear any other final comments or questions from the Board of Supervisors? I don't see any hands raised. So I do just, I think that one of the, we don't have any specific action to take on this item, other than to provide informal direction to staff. And I think some of the things that I heard were around additional communication, possibly a dashboard or some way to communicate vaccine information on the county website, including the allocation and as we have the information available, total immunizations that have been issued, finding ways to support the disaster service volunteer program. I would add that I hope that we can coordinator reach out to SEIU to ask for their assistance and encouraging county employees to complete the survey that will be going out and to, you know, talk to their own supervisor about opportunities to to be of service in this way. And bringing back a update on staffing NMC in response to our nurses. If I was missing anything that the board wants to add in terms of direction back to staff, feel free to speak up. Otherwise, I will bring this item to a close. Yep. Okay, perfect. We'll bring this item to a close and move on to item number 23. Right. And item number 23 is receiving a presentation on SB 1383, the Short-lived Climate Pollutants Act. And we have a presentation by Ashley Paulsworth, our Sustainability Coordinator for the County of Monterey. Do we have Ashley on the line?
Hi, I'm here on the line.
Hi, Ashley. Thank you for joining us and listening to all of our previous conversation. I will pass the mic over to you.
Got it. Thank you very much for having me today, Supervisors, members of the public. I'm going to go ahead and give a quick presentation on SB 1383, and the joint efforts of the Sustainability Program and Environmental Health Bureau, which, so this bill requires the county to do a number of things that are related to methane emissions and recovering food waste. And I just want to quickly bring this to your attention, since we really need to get started taking action on this. And it's a very wide reaching bill that will require some interdepartmental coordination. So the recommendations today are to receive this presentation and direct staff to develop a strategic roadmap for interdepartmental coordination and use that roadmap to work towards compliance with the law, as well as direct staff to coordinate with county solid waste operators, processors, haulers, and other jurisdictions to plan for and implement measures to meet the goals and deadlines associated with SB 1383, and also to provide any other direction to staff as you see fit. So just a few points that I want to make here. Basically, SB 1383 requires the county to, or the state, to reduce organic food waste disposal by 75%, and also recover edible food waste at a rate of 20% by 2025. And the regulations for this take effect in 2022, as you can see on this slide. And there's a lot of really specific things about this bill that are, we could go into a lot of detail on. But what I want to do today is just touch on on how widespread this bill is and how it's different than other bills in the past related to waste management. This is a lot more comprehensive. And instead of kind of requiring the county to meet a target, it's very prescriptive. There's a lot of very specific things that the county needs to do. And those are listed here on this slide. So as you can see, we've got to provide an organics collection service to all residences and businesses, establish an edible food recovery program, conduct education and outreach, as well as there's a procurement target for the county. We've also got to do capacity planning around understanding, you know, what our food recovery efforts would look like, and also, you know, what our organic waste disposal options are at this moment in time. This slide is just a little example of kind of what's going on here. What does this really mean? And why are we doing it? So as you can see, the pie chart really makes up what organic waste is. And we should be looking at organic waste as a resource because it can be turned into energy, it can be land applied as compost and can enrich our soils, and it can also be, of course, rescued and be given to people as food. So it's, although this is a very challenging thing to do, you know, there's a lot of manual work and education and expense associated with this kind of thing. We're also really, you know, if we can get more efficient, we'll be doing ourselves a big favor in terms of feeding the people in our county that are food insecure. So it's important. And again, this is just a little overview of the jurisdiction's responsibilities. And I just want to touch on each one really briefly and explain sort of what we're doing here. So in terms of organic waste collection, we're talking about all the organic waste to all residents and businesses, and that's, you know, wood waste, food waste, manure fibers, et cetera. We've got to provide containers for that in prescribed colors. And we have to label those containers and monitor those containers for contamination. And we also have to then establish this edible food recovery program, which I actually think is one of the more complicated parts of this bill for the county to tackle. We really need to take a look at our current infrastructure and see what the edible food recovery organizations are already doing and what kind of capacity they have to expand. And perhaps look at what kinds of funding would be needed for that. We also have to conduct education and outreach to all of our food waste generators and provide education in other languages. We, as a jurisdiction, must procure recyclable and recovered organic products that are created through the diversion of organics. So that could be like renewable natural gas or compost. We've also got to plan and secure access for recycling and edible food recovery capacity. So anyone that generates food waste, like a supermarket, or, you know, even a hospital in a certain point, will have to decide, you know, how they can recover their food and how they can create agreements with food recovery organizations to to capture that edible food waste. And then, you know, we have to monitor compliance and conduct enforcement. We have to adopt an ordinance by 2022 that does that or face significant fines from Cal recycle. So obviously, lots of different departments are involved in this. We've got the CIO's office involved in capacity planning and procurement, finance and legal staff to look at our, the ordinance and the law, make sure that we're allocating the appropriate resources, purchasing staff to meet the procurement target, Public Works and Parks staff to look at composting application on our on our open spaces and embankments. And then, you know, obviously, environmental health, dealing with some of the enforcement tasks and inspections. And, you know, there's even a role for those of our departments that are connected with the food bank and can provide some liaisons for us in that way, and possibly even some of some role for the Agricultural Commissioners Office to provide contacts in the agricultural space so that we can really close any efficiency gaps or provide additional resources, addressing barriers to getting food where it needs to go as much as possible. All right. So what we're suggesting here today, I think, is to create a roadmap between any involved department to meet the goals of SB 1383 in a timely way. And what we want to do is really identify, have each department identify SB 1383 requirements, create a summary of what county compliance would look like, analyze any existing county programs, resources, needs, and infrastructure, and set deadlines and implementation strategies, and try to get really as strategic as possible in doing that. All right. So I know the folks from Environmental Health are on the phone. Would you like to say anything at this point? Because I'm back here to the recommendations.
Hi, Ashley. Yeah, thank you, Chair Vasquez, members of the board. This is Rob Durham, Environmental Health. I think the only thing I'd add, and Ashley might have covered some of it, is that there are some serious deadlines we have to meet. So just to review, January 1 of 2022, we have to have an ordinance or some enforcement mechanism. Between January 2022 and December 2023, we have to identify businesses that are in violation and provide educational material to those generators. And finally, after January 2024, we are required to take progressive enforcement actions against those generators who are not in compliance. So we have our work cut out for us. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Robert and Ashley. Do we have any questions from the board? Do we have any? Do we have any, oh, Supervisor Adams?
Thank you. Thanks for accepting my old school hand raised. Yeah, this is really exciting and as you can imagine, it's going to be very big on the Monterey Peninsula because of all of the restaurants that we have. In fact, I know that the aquarium, I believe, still does participate in a program that is very similar to this. And there was a pilot program a few years ago that I know Passion Fish Restaurant and Montreal were both involved with. And one of the problems that I know they came up with was they couldn't get the Waste Management Group to pick up the bins as quickly as they needed and they developed some rodent issues. So I just want to give you a heads up that that may be something that you face. But be that as it may, I think that this is really going to be a wonderful program and I think a lot of people who are involved in the food industry, particularly the restaurant people, the chefs, feel terrible about the amount of food that just goes to waste and that this is really going to go a long way, both environmentally as well as really helping people feel better about what it is that they're doing. So thanks so much for your presentation and for the good work that you're doing on it.
Thank you.
All right, and I see Supervisor Lopez and then Supervisor Phillips have their hands raised.
Thank you, Ashley. I just want to ask the same question I've asked you probably about six times now in every single forum. This all sounds great, sounds like a lot of work. How much is the state kicking in to help us meet all these goals and pay for all of these new challenges? And obviously I know the answer, so I'll state that I feel like it's going to land on the backs of our people who are already hurting and I would, I would just hope that there would be a delay to help, but Ashley, back to you.
Yeah, we have evaluated some of the grant programs in connection with our processors and we're looking at, you know, applying to those and making sure that we're doing everything we can to take advantage of those dollars. I think that another thing that we're trying to do separate of state funding is to collaborate with other jurisdictions and share resources when we can. So, you know, we're definitely actively trying to streamline the process as much as we can.
But the answer's still no help from the state, right?
Other than grants, I don't think so.
Thank you.
And Supervisor Phillips?
Yeah, this is a big thing and it's going to be a complicated one and it crosses over a number of departments. So that's why we pay Mr. McKee the big bucks so he's going to put together a plan and program for us. But one of the problems that we have here in our county is some of the calls and food waste that have been going to the dairies. Now we have to figure out a way and we don't get credit for that because they hadn't been going into the, into the landfills. And, and so with the diminishing of dairies down to about one and a half dairies in the, in the county, that complicates it. So anyway, but we got our top man in charge of this now, so.
Actually luckily you have your top woman, Ashley.
Okay.
Okay, and I don't see, do we have any public comment on this item? I see Kristin. Kristin, if we can, I give Kristin the ability to unmute herself and speak for three minutes.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Kristin Scromi with Waste Management. I just wanted to say that Waste Management is working diligently with Monterey County Health Department and the local landfills to develop a plan for all the different aspects of 1383. We're working really hard to get folks to sign up early for food waste, the multifamily apartment complexes, the businesses. We have faced some challenges with businesses being closed and focusing on, you know, safety with COVID, but there are a decent amount of folks that are signing up every day and every customer we sign up for food waste is one less customer that, you know, we have to come to when the deadline is here. So I just wanted to share, we are making progress, we're building and expanding our food waste route and we're really excited for when we can expand to the residential sector. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other Board of Supervisors comments or questions? I don't see any hands raised. So my, thank you, Ashley, for bringing this forward. I will just, speaking on behalf of my constituency in Marina that is located near one of our organic compost collection sites, there's an ongoing issue with an odor that permeates the city and we, as much as we've looked into where and how to address or mitigate or even identify clearly where the source of this odor is, it remains a bit of a challenge. And so as you work through this, if there is an opportunity to engage with the residents who are impacted by the, by the collection of the organic waste so as not to have it increase the, this odor issue, I think we would really appreciate that. But with that, I am happy to entertain a motion to direct staff to develop a strategic roadmap for interdepartmental coordination, use that roadmap towards work, compliance with the law, and direct our staff to coordinate with county solid waste operators and processors, haulers, and jurisdictions to plan for and implement measures to meet the goals and deadlines associated with SB 1383.
I'm happy to make that motion, Madam Chair.
Sure.
All right, so we have a motion from Supervisor Adams, a second from Supervisor Lopez, and could we get a roll call?
Supervisor Alejo?
Yes, I'm watching the Georgia results, so thank you.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Askew.
The motion, aye. So without the motion carries, we'll move on to tentative adjournment, recessing into closed session, adjourning from closed session, and county council returning to report the readout of any closed session action if necessary. Did I get that right?
That is correct, Chair, and I believe now would be the time to make the adjournment in memory of Mr. Taylor because the board will not be reconvening in chambers after closed session.
Supervisor Phillips, would you like to make a few comments?
Yeah, and I appreciate the opportunity, Madam Chair. Before I talk about Jeff Taylor, I wanted to also mention we lost a couple of other people in the community just recently. One was Herschel Amos, who was 84. He was an iconic law enforcement officer in the county for years. His dad, Pepe Amos, was the famous local cop in Monterey. Herschel was the, started with this, after the Marines, started with the Seaside Police Department in 1960 and went on to be chief of police at Delray Oaks in 1976 and was just a great man, tough, tough cop, but never, I don't think he ever had to draw his gun. He took care of things as they were. And the other one I wanted to mention was Rod Rick, Rod Dewar, who was 91 but was born and raised in Carmel and was a big part of it and was a, after Stanford Law School, he started the law firm Dewar, Romick, Anton, and Curtis. And he and his wife were highly involved in Monterey Bay Area community for over 65 years and they focused their energy on improving the lives of Monterey banks and was a very, very generous man to help the community. And finally, it's a great sadness that we lose a young man, 61 years old, Jeff Taylor, who was born in Salinas and was part of the Taylor family. And after went to Fresno, he was in the ag business, but did a lot of other things after that. And he was a great father and a great son to his mother. He was, of all the kids, he was always there for his mom and he liked the outdoors and fixing things and doing things for her. And he was a very religious man and cared very much about the community and he spent much, much of his time taking care of those disadvantaged. And I got a number of calls from Jeff throughout the years and it was never about him. He was always trying to help some kid who was disadvantaged, who was in the, one of his church groups or they reached out to his church groups, trying to help young people. So he was great humanitarian, one of the only people I ever met that had no malice to anybody or anytime. It was a big loss to the entire Taylor family, especially his, his wife Paula and the three kids who are just great kids, Morgan, Brett, and Garrett Taylor. So thank you for that opportunity to say goodbye to a good friend of mine, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing those words and your personal experience, Supervisor Phillips. And with that, we will tentatively adjourn, oh, we will pass it over to County Council, Lestrade.
Thank you very much, Chair. Just a reminder and thank the board for their patience. I've sent out a revised invite to closed session, separate invitation to closed session, so please look for that and hopefully it will be relatively short. Thank you.
Great. We'll see you all back here on January 12th for our next board meeting. And with that, we'll tentatively adjourn to closed session. Thank you.
Good job, Madam Chair, your first meeting.
We'll recess to closed session. We'll recess to closed session. Thank you.
Good job on your first meeting, though.
Thank you. Thank you so much Supervisor Alejo, I appreciate it. We, I'll get smoother. It's four different things to look at, but I'll get it figured out. Give me, give me a day.
You got this.
Thank you. I'll see you guys in closed session.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. All you did was help.
Yeah. That's technical thinking.
You guys are an amazing team. I just have to say, like, everything, everything new. Coming back from vacation.
Thank you. No, you, as long as you're patient with us, that's what we appreciate.
And be patient with me.
Well, IT was a, yeah, IT was a great help, yeah.
Can you fix her nameplate? It's driving me crazy.
Yeah.
I was like, whatever.
Can I just read the correspondence here?
Yeah. Well, I know.
Well, Maria said, Maria said so quick and then she wrote up five saying, I need to go and I said, sign, you can sign off.
Apparently the meeting's still, people are still clocking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.